Welcome to the City of Fairfield's first budget public presentation. During this event, each department head will have a dedicated 15-minute slot to delve into the operations, discuss expenditures, and field questions from the council. Following these presentations, the department heads will remain present as the floor opens to the audience for inquiries. The primary objective to this event is to enlighten the community about the intricate workings of the city of Fairfield, provide insight into our future direction as a city, and foster transparency. Since this marks the inaugural year of such a procedure, we appreciate your patience as we navigate through the learning curve and strive for continuous improvement in the years ahead. We aim to establish a robust foundation for the community engagement, cultivate stronger relationships, and foster trust. While many are aware of what we do, how we do it, our ultimate goal is to communicate effectively why we do it. The city's overall operating budget is $35,708,672, with a revenue stream of $32,287,322,574.61. The difference is $3,421,973.39 in combination of rising infrastructure costs, contracts with private companies for services, inflation, and continued operation of public services. We have proposed several cures for minimally raising fees, minimally raising fees in our operations to balance the budget and close the gap between revenues and expenses. Throughout the planning process, department heads have been tasked with reducing and already bare-bones expenditures and exercising cost-saving measures to reduce the operating costs and expenses. As the city operates as efficiently and effectively as possible, it is important to note we must continue to work with our community partners to provide essential services as well as quality-of-life infrastructure that continue to attract, retain good-paying jobs, build affordable housing, and attract young families to grow Fairfield's economic base. Partnerships such as the Fairfield Convention Center, Convention and Visitors Bureau that is subsidized by the hotel motel tax, the Fairfield Economic Development Association, Evergreen Cemetery, Carnegie, and the Arts Convention Center, the Fairfield Media Center, and many more partners provide services from the lens of growth, attraction, and perpetual care that helps the good governance of Fairfield to make this city a great place for people to live, work, and play. At later dates, these partners that help us will go over their fiscal reports independently to share their strategies, but today, we will be reviewing our operations. Fairfield is a growing community with a lot of potential. It is our mission to grow, serve, and strategically improve the city in which we serve. The first presenter of this morning will be Bob Lyons with the airport.
Good morning, everybody, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk a little bit about the airport today. I first just wanted to briefly give you a description of the past and to the present a little bit about the airport. The airport was built in 1967. It started out with a 4,000-foot runway with a small ramp and a small terminal building with some tea hangers. Throughout the years, starting in the mid-'90s, the Airport Committee and the City Council and the mayor decided to go after grant money and propel the airport into an enhanced airport and able to build a runway of 5,500 feet and become an enhanced airport. This allowed an economic impact to the city, which I have given out some pamphlets back there for everybody to look at to show the economic impact that the airport brings to the city. In 2022, the DOT did a really good study on airports in Iowa to show the economic impact. So when the city decided to start to grow the airport in '95 in the Airport Committee, we received many grants over the years, and my budget consists of a lot of grant money from the FAA and the Iowa Aviation on the DOT based on aviation tax revenues is based on the grants that I receive. So for example, when we built the runway 18 years ago, we received a $10 million grant from the FAA, which the city only had to come up with 5% of that money. So the many projects we've done over the years, the two new ramps, maintenance buildings, taxiway rehabs, refurbishing our tea hangers were mostly based on grant money. The city did have to be very involved, and we had to work really hard to get to this position today. So on my budget, I just briefly wanted to talk about, first of all, my revenues, which I've had the opportunity to talk to the city council the last couple of weeks about the airport and everything that goes on, but not the public. But on my revenue side, it's fairly simple. We have farm ground that we lease, so we have around 170 acres of farm ground that we rent, and we have around 80 acres of hay that we take. And then we have fuel fees, that's based on how many gallons a year we sell, and then also our hangar rent. That's our three main revenues, except for grant money that we receive for our budget. On the expense side, our first line is building, maintenance, and repairs. That kind of spells it out. We use the money for that, for repairs on all the tea hangers, the city-owned buildings, bathroom supplies, and other small items. Ground maintenance repairs is a little bit more. Our automated weather observation system, we use money for that. We use for weed control, fence repairs, blowouts, cracked ceiling, road maintenance, repairs on our grass runway, and airport lighting repairs also. Our operations equipment repairs, that's on our tractors that we use for mowing, our snowplow trucks for snow plowing, mowers, a crew car that we have and an inloader, et cetera, all the equipment that we have. The electrical and gas expenses just for our mowers, plows, trucks, cars. And then the telecommunications, it's just simple, it's just phone, TV, and engineering expense. We have a line item for that with our Crawford Murphy and Tilly, our engineering firm that helps with all the airport projects. We set up a fund for that because they do help us with our CIP program, so that's the money that's used for that and a few other things that they help us with. Insurance expenses, that's basically for our underground insurance that we have to, the city has to have for our underground fuel tanks. Street maintenance supplies, that's basically for all the parts for the runway lights and taxiway lights that we have and are any lights on the airport. The other contractual services are the contract that the city has with Fairfield Flying Service. This is for the airport management services, which involve many, many things. So just to highlight a few of those items. So we do all the mowing at the airport, approximately 80 acres. We do all the snow plowing at the airport. We do most of all the weed control. We do all the lighting repair that we can. I also help in all the, any of the hangar tenants with any of their hangers that they need done. I also help with Melanie with any grants that we have at the airport with the Crawford Murphy and Tilly Engineering Firm. I have many airport management duties. A few of them, I'm responsible for the safety at the airport. I'm involved with all nodums, and that's notice to airmen at the airport. I have to, seven days a week, maintain anything that would go wrong at the airport, lights go out. We also take care of the terminal and all the buildings. We do all the cleaning at the terminal. We take care of all the maintenance that we can at the terminal building and other buildings. And also, I take care with the Airport Committee, all the budget duties, and take care of the budget. And also, I do all the grant reimbursements for the city for any grants that come through the airport. That's about it. I'll leave it at that. If anyone's got any questions, I know I've talked to the city council for a lengthy time, but if you have anything that you've thought about, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I just want to say thank you so much for everything that you do, and it's pretty unusual for a community of this size to have an airport, especially an enhanced airport. So you talked about some of the economic impacts. Just if you could share like some of the highlights of the economic impacts of having an airport like that in our community?
Yeah, so it goes back to in the mid-'90s. So we were experiencing larger jet traffic coming in on a small runway, so they would have to come in with very limited fuel and leave with limited fuel. So at that time, the Airport Board and myself, we knew that we had to move forward. So we went after, we went after grant money. So the Mayor Malloy at that time and the Airport Board and the City Council got very involved in seeking out grant money, and we were able to get a discretionary $10 million grant, which was unheard of at the time. You can get FAA funds, but for the FAA to give a discretionary grant was unheard of. But especially Mayor Malloy and the city worked really hard. We went to Kansas City, Washington DC. We had to write many letters from, and we had to have businesses write letters. So this was the big turning point for the airport, for the economic, the real, they seen the economic impact it would bring. So we're able to build the 5,500-foot runway. So when that occurred, it opened up the doors. So immediately, Books Our Fund at the time bought a larger jet. So at that, a jet that could not operate at 4,000 feet. They had to have a bigger run, they had to have a larger runway. So we actually, Fairfield Flying Service, built a hangar to house that airplane. So that, so the economic impact really is driven from the people that live in Fairfield that work at Reader's or at Books Our Fund at that time or Cambridge Now. The financial impact is what the DOT and what we look at. So when they come in, they move in, and you have 500 new residents living, they're paying taxes, they're going to the grocery store. So this is a true impact that the airport brings. Not only because of the airport, when this occurred, Books Our Fund said, hey, this is where we want to be. We don't want to go somewhere because we have an airport, I can operate my plane. He flew about every other day throughout all the United States. I actually flew with him for about three years. So I got to experience what happened. Not only does that occur, but then you have large companies bringing in their aircraft to do business with Books Our Fund, Cambridge Now. So it's a revolving thing. It's just trickle-down, if the airport's here, it'll happen. Cambridge is, I'm not saying they wouldn't be here because of the airport, but they use the airport. And other people come in, other companies like Bank of New York came in a couple of weeks ago, so in a very large airplane. So not only are they staying overnight, they're eating here, and people that live here are paying taxes and, like I said. So that's the major impact, like the DOT, when they did their study, they look at, along with the GA airplanes too that come in and spend the night and go to the, come here, stay overnight to go see their family, et cetera. That'll be it. And thank you very much for the opportunity. I've enjoyed being here in Fairfield for a long time and being at the airport. Thank you.
Good morning. So my name is Brett Farrell. I am the current fire chief for the City of Fairfield. Thanks for having me here to discuss the budget and kind of what we do. I think it's important that I start off with a little bit of introduction and a structure of our fire department, because when we talk about how our fire departments ran, it really, the budget is so important to us to be able to maintain this stuff. So for me personally, if you don't know me, I'm a full-time emergency management coordinator for Jefferson County. I've been on the fire department since 2000, October of 2000. In that time, I served as a training officer for five years and also the grant writer. In 2013, I was promoted to captain and then assistant chief in 2022, and April this year will be one year of being the fire chief. So kind of how the fire department's structured, we are a roster of 21. We have three full-time drivers and 18 part-time personnel. Of those part-time, the chief is part-time, our assistant chief, two captains, and a lieutenant, then the firefighters, and our full-time drivers are at the station 24/7. They work a California swing shift, they're on 24, off 24, on, off, on, and they get days off. The drivers are all EMTs, along with six other firefighters who respond to medical calls, and the full-time drivers are now doing rental inspections for the City of Fairfield. Our response is dictated by the addresses. So if the fire or the emergency is in the city, the firefighters go to the scene, the driver takes a truck out of the station response really quick. If it's a rural situation, we all go to the station, get dressed, and go to the scene. So we protect not only the city of Fairfield, but the rural citizens also. Our fire district is 130 square miles, but the whole county is 437 square miles, and we mutual aid throughout the whole county. All of our firefighters are trained, certified firefighter, one has MAD Ops, and many more. So we talk about a budget for a fire department. A lot of that budget is maintenance costs, operating costs, and personnel for our department. Our equipment is very expensive, and our line items, you know, for truck maintenance, you'll see it up here, operation cost, building maintenance can get quite expensive. So currently, right now, in our fleet, we have a ladder truck, 14, engine 18, which is our county rescue truck, engine 15, tanker one, which is a 3,000 gallon truck, a brush truck, medical rescue 17, fire unit one, which is a command vehicle, a rescue boat, wildland response gator and trailer. And those are all, have to be maintained, you know, they break down, stuff like that. So the fire department budget is one of the departments that is funded by the general The projected overall operating cost for the 24, 25 is $479,018. So besides, you know, our salaries, a lot of our budgets is obviously for, like I talk about the truck, the station, equipment, maintenance, and the gear and the stuff that we use, whether it's a thermal imaging camera, whether it's chainsaw, things like that, all have to be replaced and fixed. And all trucks have a certain amount of stuff on it that have to be checked all the time and updated if they have to be. So just so everybody knows, to outfit one of our firefighters, it's around $3,500 to $4,000 for gear, just to outfit them to be NFPA compliant for them to do their job. Before I get into, I'm not going to go line item, but we can talk about some of the bigger items. Just wanted to put in a little plug, you know, the City of Fairfield is trying to build a new fire station. I think it's important to know that we're now, we are in a 50-year-old building now, and the operating maintenance cost of that building that we're in currently is going to continue to go up. And I would invite anybody to come look at the station. It needs a lot of work if we're going to be in there for a while, and the new fire station will be huge for this community, be huge for the firefighters as far as their health and taking that cancer aspect out of what we're dealing with right now. So I don't know how much into the fire budget you want me to go, but it stays pretty, you know, our part-time costs went up a little bit for firefighters just because we have a backup driver now that is working a lot of shifts to give our full-time drivers their vacation and time off that's allotted to them. Some of the higher ones are, you know, we have to run a fire station, electricity utilities, the vehicle operations, the expenses to repair the stuff on the vehicles, and that's a, that's kind of a, that's a hard one to figure out because if we blow a transmission on one of our pumpers, that line item's going to be, you know, probably over that. So we have been very fortunate that we do have full-time drivers and people that maintain our trucks, that we haven't had something like that in the last couple of years, a big expense item, but our trucks are getting older, and that's a hard one sometime to put into what you're actually going to need. And then, you know, everything else related to running a fire station. We have phones, we've got professional services, we've got training fees, expenses to restock our medical for our guys that are running the medical calls out of there. I think this year, our total calls, if you take out being on standby for controlled burns, was around 300 calls. And I think it was maybe, Shannon could answer this because she ran the numbers, but we had well over 1,000 medical calls in the fiscal year, or calendar year, sorry. So I guess I'll open up to questions from anybody that wants to know anymore about the operating of the fire station.
Brett, you mentioned the mutual aid, and I'm just curious how you see that rising or changing and how the new fire station would fit into that whole picture as you give mutual aid to surrounding fire departments or in those relationship-building things that would be coming through this?
Well, obviously, with the new fire station, we have the opportunity to not only have a designated storm shelter, but a training room also that we currently do not have at our fire station. So we would love to have chiefs' meetings and training opportunities for the surrounding communities that we fight fires and go to emergencies with. That would be huge to connect that. But currently, with our station now, we don't have that. So mutual aid calls, you know, we run on a system where if it's a structured fire or a 10-50 that's extrication, we run them what we call an auto aid. So if Lockridge gets a structured fire and we're, they're going to auto aid us, Fairfield out to that call, so we get going. You know, all of our surrounding fire departments are great, we have a great working relationship. They work hard and they help us just as much as we help them on the mutual aid contracts.
So you're teaching each other things that you've learned along the way?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for taking out the time this morning to join us and listen to each one of us present our department's budgets. My name is Shannon Hester, and I am currently the communications supervisor for the Jefferson County Communication Center or Dispatch. I have been an employee with the City of Fairfield for the past 10 years and a supervisor for the past eight years. My department currently consists of myself, an assistant communications supervisor for communication specialists, and one part-time communication specialist that all commute from outside jurisdictions to provide effective and efficient services for the citizens of Jefferson County and the City of Fairfield. We are currently running on a five-person department, along with my part-time employee picking up and filling in shifts when she can. She works up in Washington County as a full-time dispatcher up there. Due to being short-staffed for the past three years, a single employee on average has worked 2,288 hours in one full calendar year. This averaging out to be about 44 hours a week for an employee. If someone were to take vacation and someone were to have to cover, a communications specialist could work anywhere from 88 to 100 hours in a week in a two-week time span or pay period. Keep in mind, I'm not trying to sell a soft story here because I know everybody's departments are short-staffed at this time. I just want you to know and see how hard my girls in my department work for our county with a population of 15,570 people. From January to December of 2023, the Jefferson County Communication Center took 18,556 calls for service. Okay, don't get your calculators out because some of these numbers, I didn't add in everything because if I tried to, you guys would have no idea what I'm talking about. So 4,902 of these being 911 calls, 6,493 being regular administrative lines or calls, 440 of these citizens are walk-ins, and 1,381 of these miscellaneous calls. Keep in mind, like I said, this is just what I have been documenting because we take calls, once again, that are just questions or calls that are passed throughout the building. Jefferson County Communications dispatches also for various agencies in our jurisdiction such as the Fairfield Police Department, Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, Jefferson County Ambulance, Fairfield Fire Department or Rescue 17, Batavia Fire Department, Libertyville Fire Department, their first responders, Lockridge Fire Department and their first responders, Packwood Fire Department, their first responders, and we also have the capability for Brighton Fire and their first responders by contacting our sister county, Washington County. Over the last eight years, we have also done some updating to the Communication Center, and it goes as follows. In 2021, while updating our 911 system, we also updated our dispatch consoles. This revamped our two full-functioning consoles to better accommodate our monitors, which I know some of you have been in there, so you've seen all the monitors we have. This also accommodates all the workspace we have to accommodate all the paperwork we do. During this time, we also updated the environment to our room to kind of give it an update because it hadn't been updated since we moved into that building. So we freshly painted the walls, added new carpet, new cabinets, lockers, et cetera. A lot of this expense, if not all, coming from 911 and the help of Emergence EMA Farrell. We are currently also working with EMA Farrell and updating our tornado sirens and the activation process. This will be more efficient for not only us and the Communication Center, but also the citizens of Jefferson County and the City of Fairfield. The Communication Center is also working closely with the Fairfield Police Department to install extra TV monitors that will livestream from the interview rooms. This will allow communications specialists to monitor officers for their safety while interviewing someone but not be able to hear them. So we'll have extra access because we currently can't see them. As far as the non-structural physical attributes within the Communication Center, we have also revised and made our hiring process more extensive. We are currently advising, advertising our open positions on Indeed along with the City of Fairfield website. Each month, each month, excuse me, those applicants that qualify or pass the first initial background check are contacted for testing. This test is provided by Standard and Associates, and it's called the National Dispatcher Selection Test, and it's standardized, it is a standard. And it's standardized, it is a standardized test that gives applicants an overall idea of what the position they have applied for entails. So it kind of, you know, some people think a communications position is radio, media, things like that. They don't realize it's not that. They don't actually read the description of what the job is. They just, communications, that's what I want to be in. We've gotten several of those lately, so. So those who pass will move on to interviews. Those who don't are encouraged to reapply and are advised that we are testing again the following month. Once interviews are completed, we, which is meeting myself and my Assistant Communication Specialist, Tarek McFarlane, conduct background checks with the references given on the applications. And then we reconvene and decide if they are a proper fit for our positions. So overall, as you can see, my proposed budget is pretty much salaries and that's it. So they are for the girls that work in my department who provide emergency services for, you know, the first responders for this community because without them, obviously, you know, they couldn't, we wouldn't have first responders to go anywhere. So, yeah, I don't have much besides this salary in my budget, so. So there are many other enlisted duties that the girls do on a daily basis that I could stand up here and tell you about, but I would need a lot longer than 15 minutes. So, but if you guys do want to take the time out to come and see what they do on a daily basis, please feel free and stop by and sit through a shift because, you know, every day is a different day over there. So, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I don't think directed for you.
Okay.
Um, maybe Doug and Melanie. The budget that Ways and Means was presented, every line item is different than what's presented on the screen. And so I was just curious if something changed and just making sure we're working off the right spreadsheet, I guess.
Yeah, unless there was one that I missed, but. This is what's shown on the screen and this is what was presented to us.
It might be something we just need to look at.
Yes.
I'm kind of curious while that's being researched, not to put you on the spot, but just how many calls do you get that are within the city versus, because I know you work across, you know, the entire county and then?
Um, it's doubled, if not tripled, within the city than the county. It is a little higher quantity in the city than the county, so. But yeah, doubled, if not tripled, within the city, so.
Thanks.
And we could move on to the next and make sure, you know, that, that line items are matching up. It could just be.
The spreadsheet that's being pulled up is incorrect.
Okay.
Yes, what's in your books is correct.
Is correct, okay. That's good because the numbers were higher in what you're presenting. I'm like, wait a minute.
I think with the programming of this spreadsheet that, um, when I copied it from the server to the thumb drive, that some version did not get transferred correctly in order to present today. So we'll try and figure that out.
Okay, so I'm just going to cross off those numbers and go back to your.
Yes, what's in your book is still corrected for the public. We'll get that corrected for the rest of the presentation.
And we're still ahead of schedule, so we can take our time. But that's what this process is about, is looking at all of these numbers, figuring out what it, and making sure that it's public. And that's why we're doing this.
I'm still the Excel queen though, right?
You are the Excel queen.
And just for anybody that's following along too, in the, on the spreadsheet, the wall, it was about $6,000 higher than what the actual budget is. So it's, it's not huge numbers, but the actual budget will be 6,000 lower than what you saw up there. So do we need to have Brett come up here and re-present again?
I made notes on yours too.
Can we ask more questions?
If, if Alex wants to go, if library wants to go, I'll be all right.
Good morning. My name is Alex Schmidt-McUnas and I'm Director at Fairfield Public Library. It's an honor and a privilege to share our budget presentation with you today. American public libraries are frequently referred to as palaces for the people and the cornerstone of an American democracy. Public libraries are neutral spaces where people from all walks of life are welcome. As, as such, we endeavor to maintain a collection with a diversity of perspectives and provide services that are inclusive to all. There's a lot to love about public libraries. My top three are, one, patron requests and interlibrary loans. Is there a book you need or something you want to learn about? If it fulfills our selection criteria, we'll purchase it. If not, we'll borrow it for you from another library and you'll get it in a week. Two, no two libraries are the same. Libraries are reflections of the people who use them. When you check out an item at FPL, you're in effect voting for that item to stay in the collection. And three, there's no other environment like the library. It remains a peaceful place for reading, writing, and contemplation. And today, modern libraries are becoming places for people to gather and connect. You never know what you'll find at the library or who you'll meet there. Our library in Fairfield has five full-time staff members, including an adult services librarian, a children's services librarian, a front desk supervisor, and a technical services aide who does a variety of work, including graphic design. For part-time staff, we have an assistant children's, children's services librarian, an office assistant, three front desk aides, and two shelters. Fairfield Public Library maintains a robust collection of nearly 87,000 unique items, over 54,000 of which are books. The library purchases approximately 2,200 new items annually. In addition to print, music, and film, the library now offers Wi-Fi hotspots, analog to digital video and audio converters, video games, board games, and laptops. Through a partnership with Fairfield Media Center, we also lend a wide variety of video recording equipment. And we now have three public Apple computers, one of which is set up for video editing in our AV room. As we've seen an increase in the use of digital resources and streaming nationally, we've expanded FPL's digital offerings to include access to The New York Times Online, Wall Street Journal Online, ConsumerReports.com, and Ancestry.com genealogy databases. For those who prefer eBooks or audiobooks, we have two resources for downloading free books, the Libby app and the Hoopla app. For Libby, public libraries in the state of Iowa pool their resources to purchase licenses for books. Hoopla is an on-demand resource with over 850,000 titles available. Our annual materials budget is $60,000, with funding coming entirely from library foundation grants, memorial gifts, and financial contributions from generous members of the community. Our library offers weekly children's programs such as a baby storytime with songs and movement, a preschool storytime with crafts, and toddler connect and play. Our children's librarian also offers outreach programs to a number of childcare centers in Fairfield. Last summer, nearly 400 participants in the summer, in the summer reading challenge logged over 2,000 hours of reading. Regular monthly adult programs have been greatly expanded in the last year, including two book clubs and four well-attended creative writing programs, one of which is a partnership with MIU. Collaboration with other local organizations and businesses remains a keystone of our strategic plan. In the last year, we saw over 105,000 checkouts, up from 101,000 in fiscal year '23. Even during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic from March 2020 to 2021, the library saw over 96,000 items checked out. In the last year, we've seen a major increase in active library users. We're up from 900 last year to nearly 3,000 cardholders today. Last year, during National Library Card Sign-up Month, in one month, a record-breaking 800 people renewed their accounts or signed up for a new account. Our door count currently runs about 1,600 visitors a week in the winter months and exceeds 2,000 a week in the summer. In terms of challenges, our library building is now nearly 30 years old. It requires regular maintenance and repair. And libraries today are simply used differently than they were 30 years ago. Our library building continues to serve us well, but several updates would be highly beneficial, such as partially enclosed quiet, such as partially enclosed quiet spaces, cozier furniture, and aesthetic updates to lighting, carpet, and decor. Our budget as a city department has been approximately $500,000 annually for the last several years. For the fiscal year '25 budget, the Library Board of Trustees and myself were able to significantly decrease our budget in two areas. First, our decision to end our remote IT contract with access systems in Des Moines and hire Michael Cassioppo of Fairfield Computer Clinic as a contractor reduces our budget by $8,000. Second, we removed $6,000 for library materials from the city budget and will instead be receiving this funding from the Library Foundation. Our budget for fiscal year '25 provides funding for professional development through Leadership Fairfield enrollment, as well as attendance for some staff to attend state and national library conferences such as the Small and Rural Libraries Association Annual Conference. We also budgeted to replace our 30-year-old Skylight, which is damaged, a repair that shouldn't be postponed. On behalf of our whole staff, the Library Board of Trustees and the library community, thank you for your continued support of Fairfield Public Library. I look forward to answering any questions counsel or any audience members may have. Thank you.
Alex, your library is also regional, like the fire department. So could you expound on that for those that are out in the county and how that reaches out even beyond just our city and county?
That's right. We, um, we have contracts with, with five, five smaller communities in Jefferson County and we receive annual, annual funding from them, which becomes city revenue. In the last year, we've, we've increased about 3% for, for all of our contracting towns. So we'll see a little bit of a bump in the next fiscal year in terms of that revenue. And we have about 500 active users in the rural part of Jefferson County. And that includes members of the contracting towns.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask Alex to comment on, the county is responsible for also funding the library to a certain degree, meaning the county budget. We're all members of the county, so we all pay through city and we also pay through county taxes. But what is the county's budget contribution to the library?
As of this current fiscal year, they, they have agreed to give us $42,000 annually and we receive this sum in quarterly installments. A year previous, we were, we were receiving $60,000 a year, but due to some, some legislation at the, at the state level, they're unable to provide what they were formerly able to give us.
Okay, thank you.
How much of the library's budget is through like donations? And you talked about the foundation.
Right. Well, I would say it's, it's, it's over $60,000, including additional gifts that we received from the foundation and from the Greater Jefferson County Foundation. Last year, we received $5,000 from the Greater Jefferson County Foundation to, to work on our microfilm digitization project. And then last, this, this current year, we've also received some special funding to purchase new art for the permanent collection of the library from, from our library foundation. So you may have heard we were able to purchase some art from the Fairfield Art Association during their annual member show. And we're, we're planning on requesting some additional funding to purchase maybe a few works from other local artists that don't happen to be members of the association. And that could happen this year. One thing to mention is that some of our public computers have older hard drives and they're now just beginning to freeze up occasionally. And we've decided rather than, rather than actually replace these computers, we're going to have Michael Cassioppo swap out the, the hard drives for new, I want to say 200 gigabyte solid-state hard drives. And these will only be about, will only be about $150 each to clone and swap out. And it's going to be a huge savings to the library and these computers are going to be very fast again.
The library did away with overdraft charges, correct?
That's right.
And how did that impact your budget?
Well, um, I would, I, I would say, I can't, I can't think of the exact figure right now in terms of what we've lost, but, or, or what revenue we're not getting anymore. But it was really fairly, fairly insignificant in the big picture, considering that, you know, the budget with the city is $500,000 approximately. It was, it was, you know, under 3% of that total budget, so not, really not a whole lot.
Did that have any impact on the return rate of books or did you notice?
We've just noticed sometimes it takes people a little bit longer for things to get back, but everything is returning eventually at the same rate as before. And people are really, really happy about the, the no fines and, Des Moines, Des Moines Public Libraries just in the last few months have removed all their fines. So it's kind of, it's kind of exciting to think that we were a little, we were ahead of Des Moines Public Libraries in that regard. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Morning, council. Morning, public. My name is Calvin Todd and I am the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Fairfield. It's hard to believe that this summer, it'd be July 5th of this summer, will be eight years that I've been with the City of Fairfield. My previous employment, I was a parks laborer for Marion County Parks and Recreation in Marion County, West Virginia, and then I was the Assistant Director there for three years. And I'm a graduate from Dort University with a bachelor's degree in Health, Physical Education, and Recreation with emphasis in recreation. It was my, you know, Parks Recreation was kind of something that I've always wanted to do, even from when I was in high school. I remember I went to a small school. You always had to do some job shadowing and in a career that you could see yourself in. I went down to the rec center. a career that you could see yourself in, I went down to the rec center and hung out with the director there and shot hoops, and I thought, well, that'd be a cool job to have. So I don't necessarily get to do that now, so I don't think I just sit around all day shooting hoops and hanging out at the rec center. But I've always just been interested in it for a very long time. I was, my whole family lives in the Midwest section of the country, and when I was out in West Virginia, I was tired of getting on flights and having to come home, so I started looking for positions in middle America, and I was very blessed to receive the director's position here in Fairfield, because it essentially led me to my wife, and we've been happily married now, I think, for four years. Maybe four years? And I have four beautiful daughters as well, too. So busy guy. So enough about me, so let's jump into what Fairfield Parks and Recreation is made up of. We are the Cambridge Sportsplex in Roosevelt Building. We're a 285,000-gallon indoor pool, 239,000-gallon outdoor pool. We maintain eight miles of trail, and then we've got 12 parks. And some of the things I'd like to highlight in our park system is, we have a beach, disc golf course, basketball courts, dog park, baseball and softball fields, skate park, pickleball courts, pavilions, and also playground equipment. And one thing we've been working on in my department for the last few years is updating our playground equipment. We've had a handful of playgrounds that were old wooden ones that just needed to be taken down, and I know it's a sour subject with the one out at Obie Nelson Park, the Castle Playground, but that playground exceeded its life expectancy by about five years, so we replaced it with a new Castle Playground. So like I said, the playground system that we have now, we've replaced four playgrounds or installed four new playgrounds since 2019. Two of them were fundraiser projects, and the other two were funded through the City of Fairfield. The Fairfield Parks and Recreation team consists of three full-time Parks employees, with a Parks Superintendent and two Parks Laborers. And then during the summer months, when school is out, we try to get two to three seasonal employees as well. And then there is myself, the Director, and then our Assistant Director, Jody Kessel. So we're made up of five full-time employees, and then during the summer months, our seasonal employee count is somewhere right around 40. It's what we try to get to with lifeguards, concession stand workers, and then front-desk employees as well, too. Outside of summer months, that number is around 30 employees. All right, so let's go ahead and jump into our Parks budget. We've got a budget of $76,500. That is not including full-time salaries or part-time salaries. Full-time salaries is $144,000, and part-time salaries is $29,400. I'm just going to highlight a couple of our line items that we have on there. Building maintenance, that is anything that breaks within our Parks Department or needs fixed, from a new sign on a trail, to a slide on a playground, to re-roofing a pavilion. That's where that's going to come out of that line item right there. And then the beach, any equipment that we need at the beach in regards to sand, safety equipment, signage, ropes, you name it. Trails, you'll see that's going to be material, actual material for the trail, wood for bridges, wood sealer, just stuff that we need to maintain our trail system. Equipment repair, that is all vehicles, mowers, snow brooms, tractors. That is that line item right there. That's where all of those, if we receive any bills for anything like that, that's where that will be coming out of. And then our other professional services, that is electrical work, pest control, we get some massive trees that we can't take down, or basically, that line item right there is if we, if it's a job that, if we call Joe and he says, oh, it's better to call somebody else, or if we call Redinger or Sean and say, better to call somebody else, if it's kind of out of the scope of what the city does, that's going to come out of that line item right there. And I'd really like to give a shout-out here real quick to all the other departments, because they help us out a lot. If you can see that, we're pretty thin in our employees, so we rely very heavily on these other departments, and they do a great job of helping us out. So minor equipment, that's hand tools, safety equipment, small stuff like that. So a couple of projects that I would like to highlight in our Parks Department, I've touched on one previously, was updating our playground system, but we hopefully aren't stopping right there. We'd like to put a new one over at Heritage Park. That playground has seen quite a facelift over the last few years, with the pickleball courts being there and just a lot of traffic in there, and we'd like to be able to put a playground in there as well, too, to just kind of, you know, give the area kids right there someplace to play and hang out at. And then the other one, which is kind of a donated project, would be our bathroom facility out at Chautauqua Park. So that's one right now that Melanie and myself and Doug have been kind of working on and hoping to have that done here sooner than later. All right, so let's go ahead and move over to recreation. We've got a budget of $197,639. That is not including full-time salaries or part-time salaries. Full-time salaries is $124,000, part-time salaries is a little over $107,000. Building maintenance line item, you'll see there, that's electrical work, plumbing, our control system that we have there, that basically operates our HVAC system and our pumps, anything like that. It's a system that I can look on and see if there's something wrong, or if we feel that the rec center feels hot, we're not feeling any air, anything like that. We have Johnson Controls, so anytime we have an issue with a Johnson Control System or something's not working correctly, we need to call them, they'll be coming in. And then also, we have four boilers on the premises as well, too. So if we're having an issue with our boilers that I can't fix, I can't reset, figure the problem out, then we'll call in somebody to take a look at that, and then that will come out of that line item. Printing and publishing, that's advertising. That's the money right there, that's what we use for advertising, and then getting signs made up. We recently got some new ones for Waterworks Park done up there. And then league expenses, you'll see $7,000 in that. That is anything that we need for a program, or just for example, any props for like our Halloween ride that we do every year, candy, eggs for our Easter egg hunt, which I'll plug that real quick this Saturday, Chautauqua Park, 10 o'clock. Make sure you come out to the Easter egg hunt. So anything program-wise, league-wise, volleyball's for our volleyball league, that's going to be coming out of that line item right there. Other professional services, that's software fees, like RecPro software that we have there, that's what we use to have, when people purchase memberships, we'll have their information in our RecPro software. Website fees, and then pest control, gym equipment, maintenance, once every three months, we do have a company that comes in, goes through our gym equipment, just to maintain it and stretch the life expectancy of the equipment that we have. And then any electrical work, and then the motors for the, on the Cambridge Sportsplex side, we've got 14 hoops, two batting cages, and two big divider nets, too. All those run off of motors, so they need to be maintained. And then you'll see, though, there is a little bit of an increase in that line item. One thing that I would like to do is set up a preventative maintenance agreement with Johnson Controls. Right now, we don't have anything set up. I'm kind of the preventative maintenance, but it would be nice to have some professionals come in to kind of look over the entire system, check out the HVAC units that know a little bit more than I do, and then the pumps. So that's why you kind of see that 37.5. Reason being is that will also be a portion of that would come out of our indoor pool area as well, too. So minor equipment, that's going to be like punching bags, pool sticks, ping-pong paddles, anything that we need for the gym equipment, that sort of stuff, that's going to come out of that line item right there. And then operating supplies, that's going to be anything from paper clips to gym wipes, paper pens, pencils, folders, binders, all that sort of stuff right there. That's going to come out of your operating supplies. Some of the things I would like to highlight in our recreation department is our teen nights. So we started doing teen nights at the rec center. They're usually Saturday nights, they run from 7 to 9 o'clock. We get the music playing in there. Kids are playing dodgeball, they're playing volleyball, we got snacks and stuff like that, they're just hanging out, having a good time. Hosted three volleyball tournaments this year. Obviously, we want that number to continue to grow, just because of the impact that it has on the city with so many people coming in from outside of town. And then we have a great relationship with our school district. Seems like about once or twice a week, I'm talking with the Athletic Director, Jeff Courtwright, because we have, we host high school basketball games, we have practices that are at the rec center, anywhere from soccer practices to basketball. I think even the wrestling team has come to the facility and worked out as well, too. So we work hand-in-hand with the school district, and then also with the local area youth sports team, youth volleyball teams and the basketball teams and stuff like that. We are the place, we provide them with practices, our places to practice, places to host tournaments, stuff like that. And then also, we're partnered with our Special Olympics team, the Flaming Marshmallow, give them a shout-out. We hosted the Southeast Iowa Regional Special Olympics Basketball Competition as well, too, at the rec center, very fun event. And then we've got adult volleyball leagues that run throughout the winter, and then one of the other things was, I always look forward to every summer, is our summer movie series. So Third Friday of every month, starting in June, or May, we do a movie up on the square. And we've seen the numbers of that just continue to grow and grow and grow and get more popular, so really excited about that. So let's go ahead and move to our outdoor pool line item. We've got a budget of $64,920, not including salaries. Salaries is $70,560. Not too many line items in this. Contract services, that's going to be our pool startup and winterization, and then any maintenance work that needs done on the pools and pumps. And a huge shout-out, Sean Worley and his crew, he has been helping us with that, and then also Mr. Steve Redinger has helped us out with some, we've had some water line issues and stuff like that with some leaking and whatnot, where if we had to call somebody to come in and do that work for us, you know, we could be breaking the budget, but because of those guys, we're able to kind of stay in budget. So our supplies line item, that'd be the chemicals for the pool, lifeguard equipment and cleaning supplies. So when I say lifeguard equipment, I'm talking anywhere, whistles, trunks, tubes, fanny packs, safety supplies for the fanny packs, umbrella, stuff like that. And then our concessions, we've got a budget of about $9,000. So that's what we're going to spend on purchasing concession stands to sell this summer. That also includes your paper products, napkins, spoons, forks, all that stuff, so cups and plates. Miscellaneous, that line item, that's a pool and slide inspections, concession stand inspections, and then if we have any plumbing maintenance inside the concession stand bathroom area, that's typically where we'll take funds out of there to pay for that. Couple highlights to talk about, our outdoor pool. In the summertime, we do offer six weeks of swim lessons, and our classes range from beginner, intermediate, advanced, and mommy-and-me classes. And they fill up extremely quick. So we've got six weeks of those, and then last summer was, I believe it was last summer was our first summer where we did, we took our teen nights and moved it to the outdoor pool and had teen night pool parties, and that was very well-attended. So there has been requests to have some more of those this summer, so we'll probably have two or three of those events this summer as well. Indoor pool, we've got a budget of $75,000, not including part-time salaries, which is $48,000. One of the line items I'd like to highlight first here is training. That is going to be our lifeguard training. All of our lifeguards are Red Cross certified lifeguards, and then also our instructor training. So we've been fortunate enough to have two instructors, one currently works for us, and they're LGI instructors, lifeguard instructors. So when we need to get kids certified, we can do that in-house. We don't necessarily have to tell them, hey, there's a class in Atumwa, or Iowa City, or Burlington, we can do that in-house. Building maintenance, electrical work, plumbing, we do have two boilers that operate in the indoor pool area, and then if we have any issues with our roof, we know that the indoor pool is a flat roof, flat roof, sleek, that's just kind of the nature of it. So we haven't had any issues with it here in a couple of years, but there was, I think it was about two, three years ago, we did have some issues that needed to be addressed with that. Equipment repair, that's any pumps repair or maintenance on them. So it'd be like jet pumps for your hot tub, circulation pumps for the pool and hot tub, our sauna heating element and our hot tub heating element. And then chemicals, we got $7,000 in that, that is just for chemicals for the indoor pool for the season, or for the year. And then our operating supplies, we've got safety and first aid equipment, HVAC filters, cleaning supplies, and water testing fees. So once a year, or once a month, we do take water samples, send them to the University of Iowa to be tested. Some of the upcoming projects happening with the indoor pool is looking to redo the entire pool deck for the indoor pool. It's in need of a new pool deck, and then doors from the locker rooms out onto the pool deck as well, too. I know you think that that might not be a big deal, but they're expensive, so that's why I wanted to talk about it. So they're automatic ADA doors, and they are pricey, so that's why I wanted to bring that up. And then some of the highlights with the indoor pool is we, there is a local youth swim team, and they use that facility to practice and also host swim meet, so that's where they do that at. And then just this last spring break, it was our first time doing it, it'll probably be something that we continue to do moving forward, is over spring break, we had, we called them the spring break pool parties from 1:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon, and we did it on a Tuesday and a Thursday, and we had over 150 kids attended. So it was a fun event, kids had fun, and well, yeah, everybody had a good time. So with that being said, I've kind of ran through what goes on at Fairfield Parks and Recreation, so I'll kick it over to anybody that has any questions or anything like that.
Calvin, I've seen Wood River referenced in the book. What is that?
That's going to be like gas and utilities. So that is, that's something that I, we don't actually see the bill over at the rec center that goes directly to City Hall.
And then can you speak a little bit to your seasonal staff at that outdoor pool? It says here you prefer to have 40 seasonal staff. How much have you been working with over the last couple of years, do you think?
Not that.
I figure.
No, I mean, and we're no different than any other outdoor pool. We've actually been very fortunate that we have it with our outdoor pool, had to have like a day that we just are not open, or had to cut hours. So typically, how a day runs with the outdoor pool is, and indoor pool lifeguards just in general, is, so we open at 5:30 in the morning. So we'll have a lifeguard in there at 5:30 in the morning. Now, the outdoor pool, and that's just for the indoor pool, well, then the outdoor pool in the summertime will open from 9:00 in the morning to 11:00 for what we refer to as our quiet swim, an adult swim, so adults are allowed to then come swim outside. So then I've got a lifeguard that's indoor and outdoor. Well, then swim lessons start at 9:00 as well, too. So then I've got three lifeguards, hopefully three, a lot of times we've ran off two, and I've been one of the two. So then we'll have three, in a perfect world, that will do our swim lessons. Well, then the outdoor pool opens up at noon, and once again, in a perfect world, we'd have seven lifeguards that come in and complete a rotation that would include the indoor pool and then rotate to the outdoor pool as well, too. That would include the indoor pool and then rotate to the outdoor pool as well too. So. But to answer your question, uh, no, we, we haven't been at that number a whole bunch. Uh, but you know, things are looking very promising. We've got a lifeguard class that's coming up here within the next few weeks and actually have seven kids in it.
Great.
That want to work for the city, so.
Are you required to have a certain number of lifeguards?
Um, yes, we are. So, um, if, if we don't have at least six guards there, we won't open the slide. So, and, uh, you know, with your indoor pool, ideally it was, you'll have one guard for every thirty people. So if we have like a pool party or something like that, uh, a lot of times I'll bring in another guard or come in myself, uh, during those hours to make sure that we have, we have enough eyes for everybody that's in the water. So.
I know it sounds, do you have any idea how many people are accessing our, our children's playgrounds throughout the year? I mean.
Ooh, that's a tough one.
I know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I was just kind of curious.
Uh.
How you know the usage or anything like that?
If I, if I threw a number at, yeah, I'd be just making it up off the top of my head.
We need one of those outdoor cameras, right?
We need some little ticker or something like that, grab a tag.
Yeah. Just didn't know if that was even possible to check.
Yeah, yeah. I don't. And if I figure out a system or a way to do it, I'll, you know, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
I want to, uh, I want to thank you first of all, because, um, we had to do some budget cuts when we put this budget out and you guys took probably a bigger, bigger brunt of what we cut than some of the other ones. And, and thank you for making do with, with what was available.
Yeah, no problem, appreciate it.
Secondly, your facility is, you know, it's, it's fantastic. I know when people bring new hires to town or they're courting somebody, you're usually one of the first stops.
Hmm.
Um, they like to show it off, so. And you're being a little modest too on how much you lifeguard. I think you end up covering a lot more shifts than, than what you're mentioning here.
Yeah. Well, and I'll comment on that too, about when people come from out of town. Um, every year now, we actually have a family, there's like thirty or forty of them that, um, come from Texas and they all meet here. And some of them are from Texas, some from around here, but, um, they actually go to the outdoor pool. They, you know, we get it set up for them to have a, have a little picnic out there and then they open up and, and they usually will play pickleball all morning or other activities and then they eat lunch, then they go to the outdoor pool. So.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah.
So you'd mentioned earlier too, we have, I think, twelve outdoor parks.
Mm-hmm.
Realistically, how many parks do we have that are actually being used? I mean, I know there's one off of Dogwood, I think. I don't remember the name of it.
Yeah, Southwood.
Southwood, thank you.
Yep, yep. That, yeah. Um, so feature parks obviously central, you know, being, being number one. Um, then we've got Petra right here, Heritage, Howard, uh, Waterworks, Chautauqua, Obie Nelson. Those, those are going to be your main feature parks there. You know, we've got some smaller ones like Wilson, uh, that, you know, it's got some playground equipment there, not, not much though, but, but yeah, those, I think five or six I named off are, are your main feature parks where a majority of people are, are going to spend time at.
Okay. So there's, there's probably six to eight maybe that are being used on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm concerned Joe Hurd is leaving while I come up here. He said he was gonna be nice to me today. I'd like to read something first and then introduce myself. The Fairfield Police Department would like to thank Mayor Connie Boyer, the Fairfield City Council, other elected official representatives and our community for the opportunity to present today. Your support is truly appreciated. We know it starts locally in Fairfield and Jefferson County. We also want to recognize the continued assistance of our Iowa elected officials and the judicial court system. So my name is David Thomas. I've been, um, am the chief of police. I've been a police officer for, I guess it'll be twenty-nine years next month. Um, I don't want you to do the math because, um, it doesn't seem like I've been around twenty-nine years altogether. Um, this morning I wanted to talk about our staff. Uh, as most of the department heads have said, about eighty percent of our budget is spent on personnel and most budgets are that way. Ours is even, uh, tougher because as you know, emergency services has to be open twenty-four hours a day on holidays and weekends and we have to have staff. I am going to quote an old dare officer that always told me to always start with a corny joke. So when do police officers stink? Come on Brett, you can say it. When they're on duty. We now have twelve of fourteen of our police officer or fifteen of our, uh, police officer positions filled. Um, we split our officers into, or the police department into, I'm going to talk to one of the departments, our communication department, Shannon Pester's already, uh, very well detailed, so I'm going to kind of touch on it. But of the twelve officers and like you said, when we get up to hopefully fifteen, um, our patrol division is always the biggest and it is always the biggest in any police department. Obviously the patrol division is your eyes and ears, uh, that are out there. Our patrol department has, uh, ten of our twelve officers assigned to it. So almost all the police department. Um, Lieutenant Joel Smith is our patrol lieutenant. Um, he is our third in charge, uh, just behind myself. And Lieutenant Julie Consella, who's our assistant chief lieutenant of our patrol is a very, um, tough and trying, uh, obviously he's dealing with like, um, comm supervisor Shannon Pester is dealing with a lot of employee issues. Um, he's dealing with schedules and employees needing days off and employees, um, forgetting to do some piece of paperwork. So I, I will speak very highly of most of our, um, what we call our command staff level, uh, supervisors that I'm going to talk a little bit about. He's backed up on the patrol by Sergeant William Regal and Sergeant Tyler Anderson make out our patrol three that, that supervise the patrol department. We split our depol- uh, patrol department in two squads. Um, each squad works days and nights, they work opposite days. So if one squad is working, the other one's on their days off. And if you do the math, then we have to have a minimum of eight covering. And like I just said, we have ten now. Um, so any days off, they have one extra officer on each squad, so any days off, um, any emergency, somebody else needs to either switch or, or come to that squad to help out. And, and they do a, do it willingly because, um, the other officers have done it from them. Our officers work twelve-hour shifts. They have somewhat of an approved exemption to Department of Labor, um, with the twelve-hour shifts in law enforcement. They can work eighty-four hours before they get overtime, which is their regular shift with the, uh, seven twelve-hour days in the two-week period. So once they get past, as most of you know, forty hours or eighty hours, um, kicks our, most of our employees into overtime because of the exception, exemption granted by the Department of Labor, um, they can work eighty-four hours before getting overtime. Um, they switch from days to nights every three months. And I want everybody here to know, we've discussed a lot, the administrat- the administrative assistant, if it is approved, um, we've requested administrative assistance this year and it won't be my administrative assistant. We've talked about that a lot. I probably will keep him or her busy half of the time if it's approved. Um, but a lot of there is going to be helping out with, uh, um, a prosecutor can tell you there's a lot of case files that go to that the officers don't get done, um, in, in the right time or they have one piece, uh, missing. So they will, uh, the administrative is going to help a lot with that, a lot with the citizens' request for, um, accident reports and, uh, background checks. And a lot of times when people want a record, people don't realize this, but it, it's not a, a staff person that works in, um, you know, a clerk that would work in the files room. It's, uh, Lieutenant Consella, our eye, are trying to find, uh, because everybody else is, is busy on with their patrol duties. So, uh, like I said, our next department at the police department is almost as big as the patrol, uh, if we get back to full staff, uh, right Shannon? Um, our communications department is run by communication supervisor Shannon Pester and assistant communication supervisor Tara McFarland. Uh, I do want to mention there's no Department of Labor exemption for overtime, uh, so we have to keep them on a different eighty-hour for the pay period. Um, she runs the department completely, those two run the department completely. It's the only department in the police department that I can tell people when they ask stuff, I just always say, I can't make that decision. I'm going to have to check with our supervisor, our comm supervisor and the assistant comm supervisor because I don't want to make them angry. Um, we also have an administrations department that consists of two people, Lieutenant Consella and I as assistant chief. We do meetings, uh, employer requirements, we cover shifts and we're patrol supervisors every once in a while when two of the sergeants and lieutenant, uh, that's only three shifts covered, so the fourth shift, um, if they're working days now, Lieutenant Consella and I help out as kind of like a patrol supervisor. We have a, a different, um, command structure when it comes to, I had a very smart chief and a sergeant tell me when I first started, you can't, when you become chief, you cannot make all the decisions because you'll get most of them wrong if you don't have input of your staff. And we are very proud of, we go in a closed door and it's usually, I'm going to talk about some of our command staff and supervisory staff, but we have a command staff meeting. Um, we close the door, there's probably a lot of arguing. I can tell you a lot of times I say, we're going to do it this way and by the end of the meeting, we're not doing it that way, uh, because Lieutenant Smith or comm supervisor Pester has convinced me this is the way we actually need to handle it. Um, we call that our command staff level, which is our two lieutenants, Lieutenant Smith and Lieutenant, uh, Consella and CS Pester and me. And we also then add to that our supervisory staff of seven. So we have the two sergeants and the assistant CS, uh, comm supervisor added to the list. And that's for a staff of up to twenty-three people. So it's, it's interesting, but later on when we're asked in court by attorneys, why did you make that decision? The first thing I always say is, oh, no, wait a minute, I didn't make that. There's four or five supervisors involved before we made that, um, that final decision. So it helps us out a lot in court. Um, the other division we don't have currently, we had previously, we would like to return, we lost it when we became so short-staffed, uh, that our one investigator had to go cover patrol shifts. Um, we do have a one investigator. I did it when I was a lieutenant, um, before. It was a pretty advanced, but pretty late in your career. So I'd already been a, an officer for several years and I'd been a sergeant and then I was a lieutenant and investigator. We decided that didn't work best for our folks because there's a lot of good experience they can get from that. So it wasn't my idea, once again, it's the staff that I work with, Lieutenant Smith said, hey, why don't we have newer officers be investigators so they learn and we can experience, if they're going to make good sergeants and lieutenants later on, they can make tough decisions on huge cases. Uh, so we do have our younger officers, we treat it like any, um, large department. Um, I know what we do is once we have a huge case and it happens quite regularly, the investigator will ask for a couple from assistants from patrol or we'll have two or three from patrol, then move to plain clothes and work with him and the rest of us, um, have to help cover. Uh, so we treat it like a big department, like a huge, uh, investigation where you would have four or five detectives working on a case. I can tell you it worked very well, uh, when we unfortunately had our homicide, um, of our dear school teacher. Um, half the department was assisting the DCI with investigation, so half of the department still had to then answer calls. Um, it worked better than evidently most places in the state because I, I was proud to say I heard from the DCI several times that, don't worry about your crew, even the real young ones have it figured out. I would be very proud of them. So I gotta give them a shout out. We want to get back to one investigator to do both general and drug investigations. Um, I'm just gonna briefly talk about vehicles. I know we've discussed a lot about vehicles because we get one new vehicle every year from lost. Um, we did increase one year because we were having more and more problems with, uh, squad cars. I, I don't want to complain about manufacturers now, but we do have a lot more when cars would run for several years. Now it's a year and they're in the shop almost non-stop. But we are up to five marked vehicles from four that we had before. We put one extra one on and every year we rotate them through. As you can imagine, they run almost non-stop. Uh, we try to make sure, some of our officers are driving the other car, so not all our cars are running, the newer cars aren't running all the time, but we do keep them at five. Uh, it's, besides budget, it's probably one of our very huge expenses, so we appreciate the lost funds. The biggest expense is the recording system in each one. It has three cameras. Um, there's a body camera that the officer obviously can put on their body. There's the front view camera, I'm sure you've seen it on all the cops episodes. And then we have the one that's in the backseat that is the, the person in custody then is recorded, um, it's recorded all the time too. We didn't realize how expensive camera systems, um, you know, the body camera loans, I, I won't quote you a lot because I don't want to get into, but we kind of talked about it with committee, huge, huge numbers to store it and have all these cameras, uh, out there. We also have three unmarked, only two are officially unmarked vehicles. We have a school vehicle that's an unmarked, uh, we make sure it doesn't look like a squad car because our comm specialist sometimes take it to Des Moines to training. Uh, they don't have weapons with them, so we don't want them taking a police car like we used to have them take. So we just have a four-cylinder, uh, newer SUV that gets great gas mileage, but doesn't have the radios. Um, we also have an additional, Lieutenant Consella and I operate two official unmarked squad vehicles. Um, and when I say they're official, they have emergency equipment, they have radios. Um, we do not have, um, the recording system and that's why we've had to purchase extra body cameras, not only for our field training officers working with another officer for shift. When Julie and Consella and I run out the door to back them up, we have to grab a camera too. So we each have one in our office. Um, some of the other quite expensive stuff in the vehicles, we put in computers on each one of the marked vehicles, so five computers. It's on our Iowa system. It's, we could, so that means we can run all the information, uh, vehicle information and driver's license information right there in the squad car. It saves so much time when con- the communications department used to have to run that information. Now we can run it in the car and we're tiring up, we're freeing up that radio for any emergency traffic if an officer needs assistance or doing something major. Those minor play runs, they, they do it their computer. The thing we like most about it though, and especially the officers, it is how we track all law enforcement in Iowa on that system. So they know where all the troopers are, uh, they know where DNR is, we know where all our officers are. It shows on a map in dispatch, um, and we used to have to call out a location. have to call out a location when we were calling for help. Now we can just, you know, use our help code and dispatch immediately looks up and can tell every officer that's close and dispatch appropriate units. If it's a trooper closer to the deputy than a city officer, they do that quite regularly for us. I know you guys probably don't want to talk a lot about building. It is one of our more expensive areas. The law enforcement center was built in 2001. It seems like a new, brand new building to me. It's over 20 years old. I remember when we moved in the first day and how proud we were. It's getting quite a bit. Everybody has told you today, it's getting quite a bit more expensive. We put in HVAC and, and the four agencies that are part of it, we have the FPD offices. We have the communications or the dispatch center in the middle. On the other side is the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. In the back section is the Jefferson County Correctional Facility, which is the jail. This is also a county. As I'm sure several that have sit on the 2080 committee, Doug Forney could probably discuss how expensive some of the requirements of having the jail. They have a jail inspector. So we have, but through our 2080 agreement, we did split it up pretty fairly, we think, most of the time, expenses for the building, we pay 33% and the county pays 66% because they, with the jail and the sheriff's office combined, it's about 66% of the building. And any supplies, which we go through, almost as many supplies, we split 50/50. And we get that bill monthly. Happy to answer any questions. I don't want to spend a lot of time on hiring. I could probably spend the next hour and a half. I know, don't grimace, guys. I'm not spending an hour and a half. But we've, we've checked into hiring and it started with Lieutenant Smith. I keep saying Lieutenant Smith, but he's the one that comes, he's the supervisor that came to me and said, hey, we need to revamp how we hire. We're not getting any applicants. Our old system of paper where you have to fill it out and people are required to show up without us calling them just wasn't working. We had two times where nobody showed up for testing. He asked if it would be okay for him to go to training on how to improve. Since that training several years ago, we now have the second you apply, you apply online to the police department, like any city department through city hall. We appreciate that city hall greatly, but we don't have to keep track of applications anymore. But once they apply, they get it by email. We immediately start contact by phone, our sergeant and lieutenant, whoever's on day shift. So now Sergeant Regal, they're going to switch in April and it'll be Sergeant Anderson and Lieutenant Smith are coming back to days. They will call you, they'll email you or they're going to remind you. You have testing where testing every month. And they will take them through the physical fitness standards, the written standards. It's the first part and also the interview, the background, the MMPI, which is our psychology, psychology testing. And we also have a polygraph at the end. So they hold, I don't want to say hold their hand, but they assist them like a human resource department would. And once we hire a new officer, they spend about, this is why we think it's so important to not lower standards and make sure we have qualified applicants. We have three and a half months or about 14 weeks where they have to be with another training officer. They then also have on top of that, four months at our academy, Iowa State Law Enforcement Academy at Camp Dodge. They're on probation for a year and we consider them to not understand just the basics of law enforcement for the first two years of their law enforcement career, which means for us, a lot of calls on our cell phones. So after two years, we're pretty excited, but that's the kind of commitment we're putting into this. And that, and that's why we're having them sign a contract and guarantee they're going to at least stay with us for four years or reimburse the taxpayers for this amount of money we spent on them for training. I don't want to get too negative. Like I said, I'm not going to even discuss because I know I'm running out of time. The retention discussion probably would be 30 minutes. The municipal fire and police system of Iowa, our retirement system is probably another 30 minute meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any concerns because citizens have asked me and we were doing a lot in those areas and we're happy to explain. We just don't have enough time now. I would like to close by saying the Fairfield Police Department's newly hired communication specialists and police officers are told they will be responding to or answering the 911 calls of the worst things happening every day in our area. Our very experienced veteran supervisors and the new staff in training continue to work long shifts through the nights, the weekends, holidays and their days off to demonstrate FPD's principal motto of integrity, honor, professionalism. These three very important words were chosen by our staff after a lot of discussion of what should be our highest priorities. It is added to the end of every email I send, just to remind me of the oath we took. All of our staff at FPD would like to thank you for the financial support to respond to our citizens' worst days and make it a little less painful. Thank you. What questions do you have?
You mentioned a few times, first of all, thank you for everything that you do and for the Fairfield Police Department. You mentioned a few times that you're not fully staffed. So you have 14 now. What does fully staff look like?
We actually have 12 now. 14. It's kind of confusing. Usually 15 is full staffed. One of the discussions we had with Ways and Means is instead of 15 officers, Doug Reiner was excellent about how he worded it. He said, we can't lose staff, but could we freeze staff for one year and we froze one officer's position. So this year, we're only looking for 14 officers. Next year, we'll be requesting from Ways and Means back up to 50. But that was so we would then have the money to hire our first administrative assistant. So right now, we're scheduled, we're too short. We have 12 and we need 14, ma'am.
And how's that determined? Like the number of officers that you need?
I, it's, it's tough because when we sat down with the Personnel Committee before and we said, we did a study and we're way short on officers. At the time, we had 13 officers. And they requested an outside specialist. We loved him because he was an Iowa police officer, or I'm sorry, police chief and a current chief. So he's very, and he did some studies on a lot of different things for the city council a couple of years ago. He agreed with, at the time, we were saying 13, we increased to 14. I didn't think we'd ever get back up to 15. 15 is where we actually started several years ago when I had just first started. So back, first started here, I started here from a Tumla Police Department in 99. In about 2000, we had, as you guys know, terrible recession and there were a lot of positions. At that time, the Fairfield Police Department had 15 officers. They had to retire at the same time. And city council said, we have to take you down to 13. Don't worry, we'll get you back up to 15. And Chief Coxey at the time, and I discussed, I was a sergeant, I didn't think we would ever get back up to 15. It's tough. But we looked at all the numbers and on average, and there's a lot of studies out there in Iowa per capita, how many police officers you want. And if we get back to 15, we'll be about halfway up on the list of very similar departments. We tried to be fair. We didn't include Pella with all the money Pella has and, you know, the Des Moines area with all the money they have. It was, you know, the Washington and the Mount Pleasant and that would be applicable to us by size. And that's a lot of explanation. So our ultimate goal is to be back to 15 as soon as we get the administrative assistant next year.
I know you're still, you're running 63,000 in overtime because we're not at 15. So I mean, there, there's probably definitely a need to be up a little higher. I did want to point out a couple or just mention a couple, one thing, too, is we use a lot of acronyms when we're up here. And I noticed when Calvin was up here earlier, there was something on the screen that said, three pieces of gym equipment lost. And you're talking about a new squad car, lost. And that's just an acronym we use all the time for local option sales tax. And that's funded by a different account. So I had somebody ask me, you know, one time where we're losing all this stuff. And it's, it's not lost. It's just being funded through a different avenue.
That is a great point. You should use, I am terrible to using terms.
Yeah, it's just habit. Yes. You'd talked about cameras earlier, too. I know another one that was fairly expensive is we have a new camera system through the school system. You want to mention that or talk about that a little bit?
Yes, we are, we're like any government entity. We buy new system and then we forget. And we just assume 10 years later, it's brand new. And that's what happened with our recording system. It was, we have to, we're required not only by the courts in Iowa, not only to record when we're out in the fields, if you're doing an interview in an interview room, it has to be detailed recording. So about 15 years ago, our old DVR, VCR just wasn't cutting it that you had to put a tape in. So we got a new motion activated that would record to a computer. It was 15 years old. I assumed it was, and during our homicide, unfortunately, we were doing a lot of interviews and thank God, we were also using our new body cameras. But we were losing half of that time. It would kick on and then shut off or the computer was tied up because it was so full. You should update, you know, the IT people are lecturing me saying, you're supposed to update every five years. I know. And it's been 15 years. So we really appreciate that because we found out and then we're challenged in court a lot. You are required to record and if you're counting it to kick on and it's not working half the time, we updated the recording system in our two interview rooms. And like we said, what, for an extra couple hundred bucks, they can put a monitor in dispatch so they can watch the officers doing interviews. Because as you can imagine, most of the people we're interviewing aren't real happy with the police at the time they're being interviewed. So it's, it's nice to have that safety built in instead of the panic button or, you know, having to use a radio that the dispatch can watch them when they're doing interviews. But the biggest part of it is we're updating that 15 year old system because the state court said, if law enforcement is in a controlled, if you're not in a controlled environment, we can understand that the cameras might not always work, you know? You're in a fight, it gets knocked off. It's not going to be perfect. You're in Iowa winter, every once in a while, camera, usually we're recording because we're recording from three or four different angles with the body cameras with the officers there and those cars. So they're happy. They understand that. They said, once you get into a controlled interview room and you have time to set it up, you better make sure or we're going to suppress the evidence. So it scared us. We knew we had to update our recording system. It is greatly appreciated, but it was a big expense at the end of the year that we weren't planning on. And it wasn't until a defense attorney with homicide started asking people about our recording and why it was only recording part of the time that we even realized it was an issue.
And we also have the opportunity, the option now, too, or going to where the schools will be able to switch on and you'll have a monitor in the police station to see in classroom.
Yes. Yes. That's a whole different system. The schools, like Calvin said, we work very closely with the schools. Obviously, we want to protect our future. And where there's a bunch of kids, we're always going to, in any emergency, my first two phone calls, and I can't, it can't be to Doug Reiner or the mayor or council member, it's to our two school superintendents. Right now, it's Ms. Michler, is the acting Steph Michler and Dr. Bell with MSAE. Those are my two phone calls. And if, they always answer, but it's, I don't have time to know, you know, where the school buses are going or which kids are, or I just say, we have an emergency in this area, handle the school. And they do a fabulous job of stopping buses and getting that alerts out, too. So with that great working relationship, we were surprised. The school said, we want to be even better. We want to have recording in each of the classrooms and we want to give you access. It costs us a little bit of money, but it costs hardly anything compared to what the schools had to pay for the system in the first place. But we can, if a teacher in a classroom pushes a button on, and D1, correct me if I'm wrong, see, I'm using codes again. Correct me if I'm wrong here, D1. If they push a button, our dispatch center will get the alert and be able to look in that classroom and figure out what's going on and keep us updated by live view of, that's, that's why we love this system. And that's why the system is becoming so popular. It isn't that 911 call of, I saw them 20 minutes ago. It's, I'm looking in that classroom. This is what I see. Now the classroom here, we can then switch to that classroom and follow whatever emergency that is. And believe it or not, we've already started using it. We've had a couple of students out of control that their team of, they have a fast response with a bunch of counselors that respond to students with issues. We know them very well from law enforcement. We don't usually get called, but when it gets physically, there's assault and some violence with pushing and, and they will hit that button and then we can monitor and send officers to where the teachers need us, not just, you know, in my day, it was, you know, come to the, you got to go to the office and then figure out where they're at kind of thing. Now we can respond and we all have security cards that get us in any of the schools. To say we have a great working relationship with the schools is an understatement and they do a fabulous job of, of getting us that safety information. And, and John Grunwald's their security director. We have monthly meetings, but they're always offering, this is what we want to do to keep our kids safe. And, you know, whatever, and Brett Farrell and I are a lot of that, is the MA coordinator. We spend a lot of time with the school system, but it's because they want to make sure our kids are safe and we're not going to tell them no. That's a good point, Mr. Tuohy.
Dave, I think we have a question at the podium.
Sure. I can't. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Brian Hunger and I'm here on behalf of Jefferson County Health Center. And thought I would, could leave some things to assumptions of our level of support for the police department also, but I thought I'd come and share. So there's no assumptions to be made. And then just express our interest to the city council of investing, continuing to invest in our police force. We have, as you guys know, an emergency department that also sees the worst of things that happen in the community. And we have staff there that, that have to put up with certain things that are challenging. And we have a really good, close relationship with the police department. They've been very responsive for us and things that really are needed. We try not to abuse the privilege of, of working and having them help, but they definitely do support us. We have seen an increase in the level of patient and family member aggressiveness in, in the hospital. It's largely in the emergency department, but it doesn't only there. With that, our main priorities is, one is to protect the other patients and the other families that are in that same department already, in addition to the patient who is being aggressive. And that aggressiveness can come from a variety of reasons, which, you know, aren't necessarily worth getting into now. But the point is, is that we have seen an increase in level of whether it's verbal aggressiveness, physical aggressiveness to our staff. And when the challenges that creates is for staff who have to work in an unsafe environment or unsure of their safety, it really creates some challenges and people wanting to be there from a workforce standpoint. And so I just wanted to make sure that, I don't know the conversations city councils had, but want you to be aware. but want you to be aware from Jefferson County Health Center of our level of support for investing in our police department. We have also gone as far as just recently seeing it go into a situation where we're in our, we have a public board meeting. We had a situation in our board meeting that was very uncomfortable for our board. And after that happened, I was able to have a phone call with Dave, explained what was going on, and they had an officer, Dave showed up the next board meeting for us, to help us create some of that security. So, again, the whole point really isn't a question at all, but an encouragement for the city council to continue to invest in our police department. There's a lot of things that are worth, there's some things that are worth being on the forefront of, and investing and spending the money upfront to get it, and there's some things that are not. The law, the police department, to me, is worth having the equipment and things they need to be on the forefront of, to do their job. And so, that's my encouragement is, is to continue to do that for the police department. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Hunger. I, I can't, it's truly appreciated. It's heartwarming, the relationships that you deal when you live in a community that takes care of each other, and you know that, "Hey, I know I'm busy right now in a meeting, but I have a department head, or JCHC, or Stacy Worley from the emergency." Because we've worked together so long, I drop everything and answer that phone call. But, I can't say enough for JCHC. If we respond to any emergency, like we would any large group areas, we know we're going to have problems, especially when there's people in emergency situations such as where they're trying to get emergency help, it's never. So, we definitely respond to those. I, the thing I was impressed the most with, that they don't talk about, is we had a great working relationship, but we didn't with mental health. And Iowa really has had difficulties dealing with mental health and people in crisis, and there's just no place to take them. So, Iowa said, "We're tired of the complaining, we're going to actually do something, we're going to try to get enough help for outpatient treatment." And we're going to train officers in what we call CIT, which is Crisis Intervention Team. But, a huge part of that is, we can have officers trained, but we still need to go to someplace to get them to talk to either one of the nurses, or, you know, one of the OptiMe folks also, OptiMe has been great, but JCHC, I've seen more, if you know people that have mental health issues, and when they're in crisis, I mean, they're decent, decent people, and like any medical issue, when they're in crisis, that's just a bad thing, and it's like, it's stupid example, but it's like when you get the flu, you're just overwhelmed, so you need that break, and you need to talk to a medical professional. And if you know anybody that has mental health issues, when they're in crisis, I don't know how many times I went to JCHC and talked to the nurse, and the nurse checked on them and said, "We're just going to call OptiMe, there won't be a bill," which is unheard of. And, you know, and keep in mind, this is a medical facility that is there for the community, and in trying to pay for everything that they're trying to do. And so many times, a nurse has stayed with our CIT officer for an hour, and that person in crisis and the family never got a bill. So, back at you, Mr. Hunger, the support of JCHC for our community, our officers witness every day when we respond to mental health crisis. So, I'll get off my soapbox, I apologize. He caught me off-guard there, sorry. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dave, we are officially behind schedule. I'd like to thank City Minister Reiner and Council for giving, for giving all of us the opportunity to present today. Melanie for being our Excel queen. Jason Strong up there somewhere in the, yep, thank you for recording and being here. But, in watching all of this, I'd like to thank our department heads. They're pretty awesome, and they know their departments, and they can consistently go above and beyond, and thank you. I'd also like to thank, while we're thanking everybody, I'd like to thank our city staff. A huge thank you to all the people back in the office right now. They are amazing loyal people, and we couldn't do any of this without them. I, I'm going to just start off by saying, I plan on spending the least amount of time up here. Yes, thank you, thank you, any questions? The general fund as a whole consists of police, fire, dispatch, library, parks and rec, outdoor and indoor pools, Carnegie Museum, Fairfield Media Center, emergency management, cemetery and taxi service appropriations, planning and zoning administration, and mayor and council. City Hall houses offices for mayor, city administrators, city engineer, city clerk, accounts payable, code compliance, planning and zoning, and utility accounts and processing. We process utility services, billing and payments, zoning permits, sign permits, home occupation licenses, dog licensing, residential rental registration, subdivisions, annexations, rezoning, variance requests, accounts payable, engineering, code compliance issues, submit state reports, payroll, HR, and city council and committees. In our little building is where we do all that. Speaking on behalf of the administration budget, revenues include liquor licenses, cigarette permits, property taxes, franchise fees, and electric vehicle charging station fees. Our largest expense is property insurance. In the last two years, we have seen a thirty percent increase, and have received word of possibility of thirty percent more. The city currently levies for a large portion of this expense. Other expenses include our legal fees, election cost, IT services, and software, office equipment, and meeting conference dues. Also included in the administration budget is a two percent general fund operations contingency as required by our city financial policy. I did not plan on speaking line item by line item, but I certainly could if you have any questions. Ours is kind of cut and dry, the administration, there's, our other professional services include fees for allers, for if we do bond counsel, we need them for bond counsel, Piper Jeffrey for doing some of their adjustments for us, and looking at our bond and our financial capacity, website, the software programs that we use, it's just all included in any of that. I'm done, unless you have any questions. Thank you.
And thank you to Rebecca also for everything that you do. You didn't thank yourselves.
All right, so my name is Melanie Carlson, and I wear a lot of hats with the city of Fairfield. I, my official title is Public Works Director and City Engineer. I've been employed with the city of Fairfield for almost eight years now, but I have been working with the city for about eighteen years in a consulting capacity prior to working with the city. Actually, my very first project with the city of Fairfield, it was JCHC, not with the city of Fairfield, but when I came to town was JCHC, so it always has a special place in, in my heart here. One of my roles is to oversee the planning and zoning department. Our large department of three employees, including myself, we work closely, or we work with all the other departments coordinating. But, other than the police department, a majority of the code book applies to our department. And those, the strict amount of rules that we follow and regulations in the code book requires a lot of paperwork, a lot of filing, and then additional approvals through the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. The planning and zoning department processes most of the permits that, that are required within the city. Rebecca mentioned a lot of those, but it includes the building, the building or the zoning permits, sign permits, work within the right-of-way, home occupation, puddler permits, lodging house or short-term rentals, and the residential rentals. The planning and zoning department also handles code compliance issues and complaints. We process the annexations and rezoning through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and process variance requests through the Board of Adjustment. We also coordinate the rental inspections, but as Brett Farrell mentioned, that the fire department does those rental inspections. The planning and zoning department falls under the general fund umbrella, as Rebecca mentioned, but we are able to fund about fifty percent of our costs. Rental inspections make up, rental inspection fees make up about sixty-six percent of our revenues with business license such as the home occupation permits and puddlers permits. They consist of about sixteen percent of our revenues. Building and zoning permits, given that our fees are extremely low compared to other communities, only make up about ten percent of our revenues. And then, service charges such as the fees related to code compliance, or mowing that seems to get a bad rap actually only makes up eight percent of our revenues. For expenses, a majority of the planning and zoning budget is for salaries, legal fees, and other professional services. Our other, one of our other professional services is an independent arborist that we hire prior to going to a public hearing on dead and dying trees. Hiring an outside arborist that doesn't have any connection to this community to give an independent review of those trees before we have to issue, issue it to be cut down. Other expenses such as publications and mailings are included as expenses, but are often reimbursed by the users when they apply for their Board of Adjustment or planning and zoning meeting. One of the largest things, I guess I wanted to point out about the department, because we're pretty boring and we just file a lot of paperwork, but there has been a significant change within the department over the last couple of years that I think kind of the community is finally starting to notice. But, about two years ago, and starting in June of twenty-two, the department underwent an internal or a structural change when the former chief, former fire chief Scott Vaughn left the city. The council made a conscious decision to restructure the department. The council chose to replace Scott's part-time code compliance position with a full-time position to address the ongoing property concerns. With this change, the full-time drivers are doing the rental inspections, but again, this provides a full-time person, Weston McKee, to do code compliance, bringing a lot more issues to the, to the forefront. And our budget does, our budget last year did include additional funds for demolition of derelict properties and other things that are related to that desire to clean up additional properties. Despite this change, many of the other parts of the department have remained the same. Our planning and zoning assistant, Dawn Travis, her and I still review the permits, and she does the scheduling of the rentals and the meetings. So, if you ever have any questions on who to call, some of that stuff is the change, I know, or is a change for people. They were used to calling Scott for everyone, so, for everything, so we have changed up those duties a little bit in the last couple of years. And with that, that is all I have for, to speak as well, there was no one running the spreadsheet. So, if there's any questions on the budget, I can sit back down at my seat. Otherwise.
Thanks, Melanie.
I think it's time for a fifteen-minute break. Mr. Hurd, you have a floor.
Are we ready? Okay. My name is Joe Hurd, Street Superintendent. We have eight full-time employees, me being one of them, that work down at 1002 West Jefferson, kind of behind Hy-Vee is where our shop is. We also have two part-time employees from the high school that work a couple hours a day for us. It's part of the school-to-work program with the school. So, my operating budget comes from the State of Iowa Treasurer. It's approximately one point two-five million dollars. They collect that from fuel, tax, also some vehicle title, and registration fees is where that money comes from. The street department is responsible for snow removal, snow removal, trees in the right-of-way, alleys, streetlights, traffic lights, compost sites, storm sewers, Christmas decorations, and streets, and a lot of other things, streets being one of the most important. I'm not going to go through this line item by line item, I'll leave that open at the end, and we can, you guys can ask what questions you want. But, I came into this job a couple of years ago, and it was an extremely exciting time because I had the opportunity to make a difference in Fairfield, to leave Fairfield in a better spot than where it was when I took over. Not that it was in a bad spot, but it's just an extremely challenging and exciting time. Streets, just to go through a little bit of numbers with you on that, to, about ten years ago, a yard of concrete was about a hundred bucks, and today, it's up to about a hundred and seventy-two, seventy-five bucks a yard. So, all the cost involved in replacing pavement, our infrastructure that we have, is getting more and more expensive. Of that money that I talked about, the one point two-five million, I kind of have maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars to deal with to either replace streets or preserve streets. There is a little bit of lost money available that I do occasionally get. But, I kind of look at my budget as, this is what I have, and if I get extra, then that's just kind of like Christmas, you know? They give me some extra stuff to do. But, anyway, coming into it, trying to figure out how we were going to make a difference, we're losing ground with our pavement and what's down there. So, if we have a contractor come in and replace one city block, which is three hundred feet, it's approximately, or was a year or two ago, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With the money that I have, that would pretty much wipe out my budget, that would, if I just did one city block. So, a few years ago, we started playing around a little bit with doing a partial reconstruction of streets. So, kind of what we do is we come in and we cut about a foot out from the curb, and leave the existing curb and gutter there, and then we'll remove all of that and lay concrete back in there. And that's something that we did last year, we did about a thousand feet last year, and it ended up costing us, we had about ninety thousand dollars in it. Whereas if contractors would have done a full replacement, it would have been close to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Those streets, I encourage you to go look at, are Bel Air, there's about five hundred feet on that. We did a half-block on C Street in between Broadway and Briggs, and we also did a few hundred feet on Tyler. And we also did a few hundred feet on Tyler, just west of Seventh Street. So we're pretty excited about what we're doing there. It's a, it's a very labor-intensive thing, but we're able to move in, um, do it pretty quickly. We leave, uh, we don't do anything with the base. We leave the base the way it is, that it is. And we're able to remove, um, you know, up to 300 feet or so in one day, pin it back the next day and be pouring the next. Uh, we do hire, uh, a few people to help us finish that. And I think we're doing a pretty good job with that. Um, so one of the other things, um, coming on board, as I spent some time educating myself, um, going to conferences, talking with other cities to see what they're doing. And one of the things that we also have to be doing because we can't afford to replace streets all the time is we have to preserve what we have. Uh, water is the number one thing that destroys our pavement or asphalt or gravel or whatever you want to talk about. And you have to try to prevent the water from getting in the cracks. Um, there's some, there's some streets that are so far gone, there's nothing that you can do with them. But as you guys drive around Fairfield, if you see the little squiggly lines of tar that are in some of those cracks, that's actually the crack sealer. Um, and, uh, we started about a year and a half ago. We're almost all the way through the town on our asphalt. Uh, we will finish that, um, this year. And then we'll start back through the town on concrete, on the concrete that is worthy to have that. Um, so that's a program, um, for preventive maintenance program that we, uh, have put into place. We were lucky enough to have the equipment already, crack sealing machine. It's a, it's a, it, it melts. You take a tar bag and dump it in there and it melts that. And then you're allowed to, there's a guy with a wand and he puts that in the cracks. And, and so it's, it's a pretty big deal and we're pretty happy with the way that that's going. Um, another thing I'd like to talk about is, um, I was the assistant at the street department for a long time. And, uh, this is not going to help the other people in here, but, um, I'm not a, we don't do a lot of new equipment. I try to cut down the cost of, by, we, we have a really good mechanic at the street department that takes care of a lot of stuff for us, that we have a lot of older equipment and we get along just fine with that. Uh, a new dump truck and we have a 2001 dump truck down there that they paid about forty thousand dollars for in 2001. That same truck today is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, we can't afford to, uh, purchase new trucks all the time. And with our dump trucks, we don't necessarily need to. So about seven, eight years ago, we started purchasing used trucks and, uh, we're getting along pretty good with those. Um, so I have, uh, equipment that we have to keep up on, uh, up there, uh, 6332, I think I have fifty thousand dollars in the budget for, or I did for last year. I've cut that down this year. And, you know, we usually end up spending somewhere between 30 and 40,000 dollars. We have a lot more equipment, I think, than most other departments. So, uh, we probably have 35 pieces of equipment down there. Um, but we, we've got a guy that does a really good job with that. And, uh, I'm okay with older equipment. The other thing I'd like to talk about, uh, so we have a preventative maintenance program for the streets. We also have some street replacement that's happening. And the other big thing is the people. When I come on board, uh, I knew that I was going to do things. I was going to try and be a little bit better in communication with the public and with my people, um, in the street department. Um, one of the, one of the ways that I accomplish that is, uh, when somebody calls and they, they say that they have a pothole or there's a tree lamb or, um, you know, whatever it may be, if possible, it's try, it's something that I try and respond to very quickly. If I can't respond to it very quickly, and a lot of times I'm calling them back, but if they're calling and leaving a message, I'm, I'm calling them back and saying, hey, I'm not going to be able to do anything with this, or hey, I'm going to take care of this. And, and just even if they not getting what they wanting, wanted, uh, responding back to the public, I, I think is, is good for the city of Fairfield. Um, the other thing is the, the people, uh, my guys down at the shop, um, you've heard everybody talk about retention. And I think that I've changed a little bit the way that we deal with people down there. Um, and it, and it goes, you know, it's like communicating with them what our plans are moving forward. They know what our plans are for the entire year. There's never a day that they walk in and get surprised by what they're doing. Uh, they, they, they have buy-in to the programs and the preventive maintenance programs that we're doing. They know where we're going to be doing concrete. Um, I think it makes for a happier crew and, and they're just, they're, they're vested with the programs that we have. So the, a little bit of a change in the way we're, um, looking at them. Because to be honest with you, those seven people down there, um, are the most important thing. Without them, none of this other stuff is going to happen. So those are, um, kind of some of my focuses. And I'd be happy to go through this with anybody that wants to ask some questions.
You guys took the worst of the worst in some ways, uh, during the double blizzard that we had. Can you just give us some highlights of what you all came as a takeaway from that?
Sure. We, we, uh, there, there was a moment there one day that, uh, I was walking out of the office, listening to the answering machine talk to me from people that was wanting something done. And, and I had a moment then, but you know, it was 12 days straight of being at work, but, but we loved it. It was an extreme event that, um, we learned from, we're going to be better at. And, um, I, I think that we did, um, spectacular. I'm really happy with the program that we have. When I took over, one of the things I did was establish a snow policy. And what that policy says is that we're going to take care of our primary routes first. And until those are done, we're not doing anything else. And the reasoning behind that is it used to be that it took us five hours to do every street in town. And what we would do as the snow was coming down, we would go out and do that for five hours. What happens when you're down on a cul-de-sac that only has five cars in a 24-hour period driving down it, and you're not on Burlington Street every hour? Then you get washboarding. That snow builds up, the, the, the cars are packing it. So I'm extremely happy with the way we performed, looking forward to the next one.
So keeping those emergency main lines open.
Yep, those main lines are critical. And the only way to take care of that is the blade on the ground. And we don't need to do curb to curb, we need to take care of the travel portion. So those are little things, you know, learned after being at the street department for 23 years. You don't need to do the whole street, you can come back and finish that later. Let's take care of the, the tire portion, so.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Joe.
Well, good morning. My name is Steve Redinger. I'm the water superintendent for the Fairfield Water Works. Thank you for having me here today. I'm going to start off a little background of myself. I've been in the water profession for 31 years. Four years at a surface water plant in Bethany, Missouri. Two years at a shallow well plant in Gladstone, Missouri, and the last 25 years with the city of Fairfield. A little bit about our plant. The water treatment plant in Fairfield is a little unique. It has two plants that are basically wrapped into one. We have our traditional lime softening plant that was built in 1974 for four million gallons a day. And our electro dialysis reversal plant, EDR for short, built in 2002, and it's capable of one million gallon a day. We'll take half of that water and treat it through the lime softening plant and the other half through the EDR plant, then we blend them together to send to town. We currently, on average, pump out about 1.1 million gallons a day, which feeds all of Fairfield, Lockridge, Jefferson County Rural Water, and Libertyville. Our water works is run by the Department of Natural Resources, which drives our budget. Every two years, they issue our operating permit. They tell us what to test for, and they'll walk through to see if we are operating according to the permit. We cannot change treatment or chemicals without their approval. We currently have eight employees, including myself. I'll back up, we currently have six employees, including myself, but we're in the process of hiring one. We got three at the treatment plant and four on the distribution crew. Out of those seven employees, they maintain over 96 miles of water main, 700 fire hydrants, 5,233 meters, four buildings, two water towers, three deep wells, two sludge lagoons, six trucks, backhoe, skid steer, mini excavator and two dump trucks, also mowing at the deep wells, the water towers and the plant. We also have two generators they take care of and our leak trailer. Our, our yearly operating budget is around two million, which pays for the chemicals, the maintenance, the salaries and the training. And I didn't plan on going through all those line items either, but I'll be happy to answer questions at the end. One of the ways we've been trying to stretch our dollars in the past few years is doing in-house water mains on smaller jobs. Uh, we've installed two VFDs on our last two high-service pumps that pumps water to town to help with the power usage. Also shutting down the plant of a morning when possible, a few hours for the, because electrical rate is higher during the day, so we shut it down in the morning. One of the big projects we are finishing up on Highway One from is, uh, we're just about to get done, is from Highway One from Adams Street to the Emanuel Lutheran Church on Highway, or South Highway One, which consisted of 4,525 feet of water main. It was upsized to an eight inch from a six inch to push more water south of town as there's more growth going on down there. And this was an older part of town, so we did eliminate some lead joints and lead services. We're also getting ready to do a six-inch water main on South Ninth in front of Park and Rec, and then go south to Jefferson, then down to Seventh Street. And that's going to kick up probably this week. Some of the projects for 2425 is upgrading our radio controls for the water towers and the deep wells, also our SCADA controls, cleaning one of our sludge lagoons, replacing a 1998 truck, and divers to clean our million-gallon clearwell and both water towers. So with that, any questions? Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Sean Worley. I'm the wastewater superintendent with the city of Fairfield. I'd like to thank the council and the, and the community for giving us this opportunity to present our facility operations and budgets with you today. The wastewater facility is a new state-of-the-art facility that allows treatment of sanitary sewage without the use of chemicals or additions. Instead, our treatment process involves activated sludge process, which uses select bacteria for the breakdown of organic solids. The new upgraded facility has been in use since 2020. The wastewater facility operates and maintains 74 miles of sanitary sewer mains, 1,150 manholes, 16 sewer lift stations, 57 submersible pumps, ranging from two-horse to 200-horse, nine buildings, uh, four screw pumps, three generators, uh, nine light-duty vehicles, five heavy-duty vehicles, construction equipment, including skid steer, excavator and attachments, grounds equipment, including mowers, weed eaters, which facility uses to maintain over 10 acres, sewer cleaning machine, along with robotic, robotic camera system, and all the treatment control equipment. The wastewater treatment budget is largely permit-driven, which means the facility in the city has an MPDS permit. An NPDS permit is a national pollution discharge elimination system. And it is governed by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources as well as Environmental Protection Agency. The permit parameters at which our wastewater must be treated to, thus guiding the treatment budget. The facility operates with seven full-time operators, who, including myself, who service and maintain equipment, assets of the city. The majority of the maintenance and repairs are conducted on-site by our trained employees. The facility strives to provide needed training and excellence in the treatment of water to ensure that our assets are protected as well as, as well as our other water environment. As I've listed some of our assets previously, it's most important for me to say that our major assets of the city is our employees. Uh, without our employees, without the training that we are providing them, without, like Joe had mentioned, with the buy-in for this, with anything what they were doing through the city and serving the general public and our population is very critical. And without our employees and the high-quality employees that we have, we'd never be able to do that. Our yearly operating budget is approximately 1.9 million, which includes all operating treatment, maintenance, training, repairs and salaries for the entire department. I'll break down, I'll break down a few highlights of our 2024, 2025 budget and try to explain the uses of the budgetary dollars. The wastewater facility is finished up with a grease, lightning, reconstruction, forced main sewer line rehabilitation. This is a total rebuild of the city's main lift station, which services the west side of Fairfield. The lift station handles approximately half of the city's one million gallons a day, wastewater flow a day. The station was last repaired 17 years ago and has had, been in operation since the 1980s. The new lift station is sized and scaled to handle future expansion on the west half of Fairfield while utilizing low-flow and high-flow pumps, which allow for better water transfer as well electrical cost savings. The forced main rehabilitation goes hand in hand with the project as it replaces worn-out sewer piping and allows for continued growth along the southeast corridor. The wastewater facility operates a certified lab to perform some of our lab testing in-house. Over the last three years, lab chemicals and tools have increased at a price at an alarming rate. To combat some of the cost increases, we have utilized our certified lab status as a tool to be able to perform outside testing for small communities and use those fees as an offset. The wastewater facility also accepts sewage from certified waste haulers in our community that are collecting sewage from septic tanks. The service provides, provided is billed to the contractor at a per 1,000-gallon rate and is another source of income for the facility. Another struggle for all wastewater treatments is energy use. The equipment gets more automated and treatment processes become more stringent, the energy, with energy consumption rates. As energy costs have risen, we are taking a proactive approach into energy savings with the use of variable frequency drives, which allow the electric motors to run at a slower speed and come up to full speed slower. We are optimistic to be able to curb excessive peak use and therefore verify lowering our equipment cost. Energy costs. A variable frequency drive will also allow, most pumps will run at 60 Hz. That's a given Hz for everything, hair dryers, anything. Some piece of equipment don't need to run at that particular Hz to get the same amount of pumping ability that we would need. So we could bring that Hz down to 40 Hz and still get what we need and provide us energy savings. Uh, with energy cost reduction in mind, we have also signed an energy conservation contract, often known as the brownout program. This program works as a buffer for extreme demand of electrical usage during high-temperature periods or low-temperature periods. While the program is instructed, when the program is instructed, we reduce our energy usage from the grid to 0% during these events. During these events, the facility will utilize generator power to operate the, the facility. This allows the facility to utilize the equipment required for standby operation in a useful fashion and to cost savings. The estimated cost savings for being on the program will be approximately $8.21 kilowatt credit, which could save us over $30,000 annually. The facility has several projects planned for the fiscal year and most are in in-house repairs such as sewer point repairs. These point repairs is small segments of sewer line that has failed. They were repaired mostly in-house using open trench digging as well as no pipelining, no dig-pipelining technology. The facility evaluates repairs needed yearly with the, with the use of our robotic camera and in turn rates the repairs in urgency. The department will start sewer mechanical cleaning the first week in April through the end of November. We strive to clean a quarter of the city's main sewer lines yearly as well as camera these same lines to constantly update the condition of our assets. Overall, the wastewater facility has remained fiscally responsible in utilizing a real- in utilizing a realistic budget, maintaining a performance-based water treatment process while continuing to protect our streams and rivers for the people and nature who utilize and depend on them. Would there be any questions?
I, I was gonna ask, I know we've spent, or budgeted, spent a lot on the new, um, step, well, step three, which we're doing right now. I think it was twelve million last year or something close to nine million this coming year. Population-wise, capacity-wise, where, where would that put us when this is all finished? What will we be able to handle?
It's more on the, so there's two different ways to look at this. It's more on the realms of what we are required. So right now, when you see the step one, step two, step three, we're actually following a consent order by the DNR and the EPA. Um, we were under consent that we had to stop sanitary sewer overflows. Um, in order to do that, there was many variations. Um, we picked the most economical variation for the city, was that is to add in redo the treatment plant for one, which the tran, plant is capable of treating nine million gallons a day. Our average inflow to the day is just under a million. So there is some buffer there. Um, with the rest of it, it was basically we put these trunk lines in around the outside of the city that are much larger and able to transfer water to the plant. It was to, to do that, the other side of that coin is we'd have to go out and dig up every sanitary sewer line that would have some infiltration, which is water coming in small cracks and replace everything. Um, so dollar for dollar, it was much more feasible to put in the trunk lines. And then as we go through our yearly budgets, uh, you'll notice that one of the line codes is, uh, sanitary sewer line code. That money was actually presented to the DNR and EPA as part of our agreement that we use that money to replace sewer lines as we go now. Instead of having, uh, well, much bigger, a hundred and fifty, two-hundred million dollar bill to fix all the lines, we can base that out and repair lines more in-house at our own pace, not only as our workers' pace, but at our, at our budget pace. So as for increasing wise, yes, there is a buffer with all of our new equipment going in. Um, we got to look at though too, we bring in about a million gallons a day, the plant's capable of treating nine million. Plants don't last forever. Um, so if forty years, thirty years, somewhere in there, probably close to the forty year, the plant will have to be upgraded again. Different things happen all the time and that constantly changes our ability to treat water and how many gallons we can. So to answer the question as simply as I can without going on any further, what we've done so far, yes, we definitely have created a buffer for continual growth in the city.
I'm kind of curious about, you said that you do some in-house lab testing and to kind of offset some of your expenses, you've offered that service and those test, that testing ability to other surrounding areas. What kind of testing do you do?
So all of our water testing that we are certified for is, um, I won't go into too much definition, but one I'll pick out is BOD, which that is biochem, or bioox, um, oxygen demand. Um, that's a test in wastewater that determines how much demand that water has to be able to treat till we can release to a stream. Um, we're certified to be able to do that at our lab. There's a lot of little towns that are not. Mount Pleasant actually does not have a certified lab. Um, Birmingham, Iowa, we do treatment processes for them and do their testing. So we're using that avenue of some of these tests that doesn't inquire a lot of time to do. We can do them with our daily stuff, but it opens up just a whole new avenue. Cause before, all these small communities, we're having to overnight UPS these packages to the state of Iowa, to the hygienic laboratory or other private laboratories to have this done. Now they can drop their samples directly off to us. We're providing them a little bit of a cost savings because of the shipment process, but we're still charging the same amount as the bigger labs cost. So that just helps us provide just that little bit of buffer there that helps. The chemical prices have, they went up dramatically right after COVID, um, and they've stayed that way. So that's, we had to come up with somewhat of an offset for that. And that's why we work with waste haulers as well, and we've done that for years. So.
Great.
You bet. Any questions? Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Hello again. My name is still Melanie Carlson and I'm still the Public Works Director and City Engineer. Uh, once again, I'm the cleanup hitter, but that in no way reflects my athletic ability. Uh, but rather is a good summary, uh, for my job description in the sense that a lot of, uh, little things and miscellaneous things end up in my plate or, um, in my court. Um, in my many roles, I'm involved, uh, one of the aspects is I'm involved in all aspects of construction within the community. And, um, some of that is doing the design for a project, a project that we construct in-house and some of the smaller water mains, um, approving the building permits, as I mentioned earlier. Uh, but most of my time is spent in managing projects that are designed by outside engineering firms. Um, and in managing that, uh, there's a lot of aspects to those that take up a lot of time. Um, Crow Creek Bridge, for example, different things that I was involved in, um, included the environmental assessment, uh, the walking underneath the bridge, checking for bats, uh, doing the permits, including the NPDS permit, reviewing the contracts uh, before it came to council, uh, getting the two easements that were needed in order for the bridge. And now working on the detours and the road closures that are coming up. And then once construction starts, reviewing the payments before it comes to council and, um, sometimes reviewing and/or negotiating the change orders before they come to council as well. So working as that intermediary between the construction project and council. Um, so by the time it comes to council, um, you there, uh, hopefully I have a lot of the questions answered for you. Um, but in my position as, uh, the city engineer, one of my goals with the position that was given to me, but also myself having worked in the community for several years, was to coordinate the construction projects between the departments. Uh, none of us want to see a brand or a patch, a concrete patch in a brand-new street due to a water main break. And although sometimes this is unpredictable, through longer, long-range planning, I feel we've met this goal and we continue to strive for improved coordination. The primary document for this coordination is the Capital Improvements Plan. Funds, um, such as the local option sales tax and the Capital Improvements Reserve Fund have some flexibility regarding which department they can be used for. Um, but also are generally restricted to the capital projects and capital purchases. Um, so those are the two, uh, two of the funds that we have not discussed yet today. So I'm going to talk about the Capital Improvements Plan and then those two funds, um, using a sheet from the Capital Improvements Plan. The Capital Improvements Plan, or CIP, is a document forecasting the city's capital projects and capital purchases over the next five-year period. In addition to identifying future capital needs, the CIP estimates capital costs for each of the projects and purchases and identifies funding sources for each. To coordinate the expenditures, the CIP also includes a list of capital assets. A capital asset is real property such as the equipment and buildings, which have a tangible value to the city. These capital assets, you've heard the department heads talk about them, um, the stuff that breaks down on a regular basis, but, uh, your pumps, your HVAC systems, your vehicles, your building components, all of the things that maybe are not thought of as capital projects, but yet still require funds in order to keep the department operating. The functions of a Capital Improvements Plan and doing a five-year plan allow time for the, a project to be designed or easements to be negotiated, depending on the project. Allow time to arrange financing, uh, especially if we need to borrow money or go through a bonding process. Provide for the replacement and rehabilitation of those capital assets such as, um, we do not want to get to a point where the library cannot be, uh, stay open because the air conditioning is no longer working. We, uh, the Capital Improvements Plan is trying to prevent things like that um, from catching us off-guard and requiring impromptu financing. This, or impromptu construction, the impromptu construction, uh, costs the city more and can be a detriment to the city's bond rating. Uh, the CIP also guides future community growth and development and outlines, um, present and current needs. The CIP is about a forty-five-page document, so I'm not going to go through every part of it. It was attached to last night's council agenda and there will be a public hearing on the CIP on April eighth along with the budget. Uh, when the council approves the CIP in addition to the budget, it authorizes the funds for fiscal year twenty-five. Many of the purchases and projects listed in the Capital Improvements Plan for fiscal year twenty-five were already mentioned by the departments, um, the, mentioned by the departments today. Um, this is one of the sheets that is in the Capital Improvements Plan. This is fiscal year twenty-five. Uh, some of the larger projects, again, that were already mentioned, um, is the fire station, uh, Crow Creek Bridge construction, the EDR replacement at the water treatment plant, uh, reconstruction of the taxiways to tea hangers at the airport, Chautauqua bathrooms and removal of the lime strut, sludge at the water treatment plant. Um, one of the battles Rebecca and I have every year is when will a project start or finish? To which I normally reply, if she can predict the weather, I will tell her when it will start or finish. Um, so sometimes you'll see an overlap on the budgets of a project. Uh, Crow Creek Bridge, again, as an example, was budgeted in both fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. That doesn't mean that we're going to spend two times the amount of money, but having it in both fiscal years allows us that flexibility that if, um, in this case, they're starting earlier than what we predicted and it makes sure that we're authorized to spend those funds in both fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. Uh, but the CIP gives me, um, gives me and the council and the public that overall project budget regardless of the fiscal year that the project is falling in. Cause oftentimes these are following, falling over multiple fiscal years. Um, the CIP covers, covers all capital projects regardless of the funding source. Um, a lot, you, when the department heads were talking about their projects, you may have noticed that they were not listed in their budgets, um, such as the fire station or different pieces of equipment. And that's because that those, uh, capital projects are often funded by the two, two of the funds that we have not talked about yet, which is the Capital Improvements Reserve Fund, or SURF, and local option sales tax, or LOST. Um, SURF, and thank you to everyone who voted in November, was approved by general election and levies sixty-seven and a half cents per thousand dollars of taxable value. It brings in around two hundred and forty thousand dollars per year to be used, to be used for capital improvements. Um, prior to the election, we talked about a lot of different projects and SURF is again really flexible and can be used in any of our departments. For fiscal year twenty-five, um, a thousand dollars of SURF is designated for playground equipment at Heritage Park and the remainder is designated for the fire station. Local option sales tax brings in significantly more money than SURF. Uh, LOST is a one percent sales tax collected within the city of Fairfield. Approximately one million dollars is brought in through LOST, but must be divided as voted upon in two thousand seventeen. The vote set for fifty percent of that million dollars to be designated for street and street construction, twenty-five percent for property tax relief and twenty-five percent for other lawful purpose, including community betterment. For fiscal year twenty-five, the street portion, um, again, goes to an assortment of projects, um, the, including, uh, the reconstruction that Joe Hurd mentioned, um, where he's going to be cutting inside the curve and replacing the, I'll call it the intersection, but it'll still be a majority of the streets. So reconstruction of Park Street, uh, near the, um, Fairfield Golf and Country Club. Um, there will, LOST will be paying for some of the parking and street paving that needs to be done around the new fire station. There is, um, design costs associated with future projects, including an overlay to Adams Avenue from main to fourth, bridge inspection and design for improvements to the culverts on, um, the large box culverts on B Street, D Street and Kirkwood Avenue. Um, there's also some needed repairs to the outlet of D Street Culvert and a small portion of Crow Creek Bridge construction uh, will be paid for from LOST in fiscal year twenty-five. So, um, I guess in summary, the fiscal year twenty-five street, LOST money, a majority of it is going to be focusing on, um, culverts and, uh, bridges. The city does have several of those that we need to maintain. And there has been, um, some work that I guess kind of been postponed for a few years. And, uh, we hope to get better bids by lumping some of that work together. For the remainder of that lost, that other twenty-five percent and twenty-five percent, the proposed community better, betterment grants recommended by the Ways and Means Committee total eighty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. These annual grants are given to nonprofits. Um, I'm not going to steal the committee's thunder by announcing who all got those grants. I know that's one of the favorite parts of being on Ways and Means, but, um, the total amount was again eighty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. The other community betterment items included, uh, funds for the fireworks. Again, additional funding for that equipment at Heritage Park, rec center equipment and funding for the beautification committee, commit, beautification commission. Um, the other lawful items of LOST for the fiscal year twenty-five budget include the indoor pool, um, improvements Calvin mentioned to the flooring and the doors, infrastructure maintenance to Fairfield Arts and Convention Center, this building, the police car that Chief Thomas mentioned. Um, LOST is often used to set aside funds for fire trucks. Um, our next fire truck purchase that is required, that is needed, um, is about a one-point-four-million-dollar vehicle. So we set aside a hundred dollars a year or a hundred thousand dollars a year. Woo, a hundred thousand dollars a year, um, to save up for that purchase. Um, there is a little bit of funds in there for the patching of the library parking lot. Again, talking about how well the departments work together in this, um, the LOST funds are going to pay for the concrete, but the streets department is going to come in and do that work, uh, for the library in order to, um, clean that up a little bit. And then, and then fire department gear. Uh, this, uh, not to end necessarily on a negative note, but the city of Fairfield has a lot of infrastructure needs. With the fifty-eight miles of streets, seventy-four miles of sanitary sewer and ninety-two miles of water main, approximately a half a mile of, approximately a mile of street and a mile of water main and sanitary sewer main should be done yearly in order to maintain the system. In addition to that, the city has over fifteen million dollars of capital assets needing repaired or replaced in the next ten years. Although LOST and SURF are more flexible in their use, uses, they are, uh, a critical and essential piece in, piece in the city's ability to maintain the existing infrastructure. Um, I couldn't make the, uh, Capital Improvements Plan work without these two funds. Uh, as Director of Public Works, I want to end by saying we have an excellent group of employees working to maintain our infrastructure. They've said about how they work together. Um, and you've, I mean, they, they, each of them have said it. So they really appreciate each other's help and I appreciate them working continuously to make every dollar count. Unfortunately, we're all facing rising costs around every turn. Joe's example of, uh, concrete price is just one of the many things that we've seen increase over the last several years. Some of our department's budgets are permit-driven, such as water and sewer. Others are user-based and others are limited by state legislation. We appreciate all of you who came today or are watching online. We value the community's input, but appreciate this opportunity to provide details we don't always get to share in a few moments of council meeting. Um, I, and that is. And that is all we have to say, so I do not have, I'd turn it back over to the council.
I did want to, two things really quick. You said announcing the LOST grants is one of the favorite parts of Ways and Means. I didn't realize there was a favorite parts of Ways and Means.
That's the only good part of Ways and Means, I thought.
Well, you haven't done that yet, then, all right. We use a lot of titles and terms and stuff here, too. Do you want to mention real quick Crow Creek Bridge, where that is and what's going on?
Yes, yeah. So Crow Creek Bridge is the bridge on Business 34 or Burlington, near Chautauqua Park. The loop trail goes underneath it, so depending on how you travel about town, you maybe only know it as where the trail goes under, and if you are, you know, if you drive your vehicle on that side of town, you know it as the bridge right before the nursing home. So it, again, depends on how you travel about, about town. That bridge is 75 years old, 70 years old, was originally built by the Iowa Department of Transportation. I feel like it is a really great example of how the city and the county worked together in order to do the best thing for the taxpayers. The bridge was transferred from the Iowa Department of Transportation to the county, but the county grants for bridges are much more competitive and often only fund about 50% of bridges. We were, through talking with our bridge consultant, discovered that the bridge would be extremely competitive in the city side of things, and so through discussions with the county, the city chose to take that bridge over and were immediately, I mean, the first year we applied, we were awarded $1 million of state grants for that bridge. So it covers a majority of the construction costs. The county, as part of that transfer to us, did give the city $150-some thousand dollars, $155,000, to help with the construction, and there are some other grants and city funds going into that Crow Creek Bridge. There are really not a lot of alternative ways to construct a bridge, so the bridge is going to get torn out and then is going to get rebuilt. So the road's going to be completely shut down. I'll, again, with one of my mini hats I wear, I will get a detour posted to Facebook, hopefully before the week is up, but the detour will be out Glasgow and then utilizing Osage, again, because East Burlington is going to be completely closed during this construction. It would be about a six-month construction window, again, includes completely removing the bridge and then reinstall, reconstructing it. And, again, and the goal would be to get the bridge, you know, back and open before heavy truck traffic for the county starts around October when harvest season starts. And I, I am going to, though, take that opportunity, because I have a lot of people will message Facebook or email me asking about particular projects, and I know sometimes my engineer's update is more thorough than others, but just reminding people that every, the second council meeting of every month, there is a written project update about all of the city projects that are going on. Sometimes there are projects that the city's not funding or not as involved in that are not listed on there, but to, you know, if you want to, if you have a question on what's going on south of town or what's going on here, the citizens, that's a great place to start looking, especially because, again, I might not always get back to you right away with your question, but that can give you maybe a start on what's going on in a certain area if you have a question. Thank you.
At this time, we would like to open the floor for public questions or comments, if you have any, and if there are none, then I will close this out. We, we've got a microphone in the back, and I would love for you to say that at the microphone, if you don't mind.
Would you tell us your name also, please?
I just wanted to comment, it was so enlightening to hear from each of the people who represented their departments. I know that the quality of light that we have in Fairfield is incredible, but hearing what everybody's doing to make our community the great place that it is was just so valuable. I want to thank all the public servants that took time to clarify their thinking and make these presentations to us. Thank you for all that you do.
Hi, this is Brian Hunger again. I do appreciate also the opportunity and your guys' opening this up. I have two questions. One is, is I know that there's been conversations regarding the, I, I think the term is franchise fee on the electric bill. And so I understand and I appreciate the efforts that have been made from kind of, I think, which was starting off at like a 4% and has dwindled down, and I think it's set at about 2% according to the budget, if I've heard correctly. And so my question is, knowing that the state has passed legislation to cap, which makes it challenging for you guys to pass a budget that covers everything, what is your long-term, what do you, what do you anticipate seeing the franchise fee being used as, long-term? Meaning, is it a constant kind of battle with the state? Because it seems kind of like a workaround from what they passed. And so I'm just kind of interested in your guys' thoughts on how does the franchise fee get used long-term? And then the second thing is, I was just curious on, is there, the department budgets I saw, is there a combined total dollar amount? And did you anticipate, or did you get an increase in revenue or a decrease in revenue? And then also a decrease or an increase in expenses? Thank you. That's a lot.
There, there's a lot, and you can help me if I, if I miss some of the stuff, then you can back me up, and, and I'm also, if there's some input from the council, to, to help with some of these things. So the franchise fees, yes, there, there is a cap, so a couple of things. One, is there an increase in revenue? Yes, the increase in revenues is about $97,000 that we, that we received this year in our, in our tax levies. That, that money has disappeared through all of the, the cost increases and what have you. That's just the portion of it. The second portion of it, as the franchise fees, will help us balance all of those expenses that, that we've talked about the, this morning. And as the council and the Ways and Means will discuss, as those funds come in, where those funds are best used appropriately, but mostly it's for operating. And, you know, as we, we talked about, a fire truck is $1 million and 1/2, and an HVAC system is $550,000, and we have an aging infrastructure. And using, the number one goal is for us to balance that budget and make sure that, that we're not going backwards and we're continuing to go forwards, and even the, the county itself is, is feeling these constraints, and, you know, us maintaining what we have rather than, you know, cutting services or eliminating something, because Fairfield is a progressive community, and they've got, they've done a lot of things right over the last several decades for seeing some of the problems that we may have in the future. And this right now, the, the Ways and Means Committee works so hard for so many hours and days and weeks to just look at all the ways that we didn't have to go down this path. The only thing that, that we can do, the max that we can go with franchise fees is 5%. Right now, we have a 1% franchise fees, and that was actually to replace a fee that was taken away. So then, to balance the budget, because, as I said in the introduction, is we were at a, we're at a $3.4 million operating deficit. Now, that's with all of the wastewater and water projects and what have you, but the general fund deficit was about $450,000, is that correct?
Last year or this year?
This year.
Six hundred.
We used, we used 414? 414? 414, $414,000. So those franchise fees will actually only give us a $30,000 increase in balance. So that's just, Ways and Means work really hard at just trying to keep it flat, and, and we don't, I, nobody likes to pay taxes, and we don't want to tax ourselves to death. Nobody wants that, but we definitely need to have the revenue streams to make sure that we continue forward into the future and address not only our operating, but also our overhead. So is that helpful?
I want to add real quick, too, on the franchise fee, that we did add, there was an additional 2% added this year. Last year, we submitted a budget, I believe, that was 400 and whatever thousand under revenue. This year, we tried really hard to submit a budget where we did not come in under revenue. Now, we will have some cushion of contingency money available, and if we do not spend that this year, or don't spend much of it this year, we'll go into next year not having to make up as much money. So the franchise fee of the 2% that was proposed here in this budget is a one-year, I'm going to call it a contingency expense. That will be reviewed again next year, whether or not we need it or, or what we do with it. We do not intend that being a permanent fund, and we are one of the very few communities around here who didn't instantly max it to 5%, which is the state limitation. Most communities said, oh, we need the money, we're going to 5% right away. We didn't do that, that was the very last thing we looked at. We wanted to know where we were at, but it was not where we started, so.
And I'll add, you know, Doug and team really went above and beyond getting this budget that you guys saw, Two Ways and Means, to go through. In prior years, it was a bottom-line budget review. You never got to see what people were spending money on, so I give huge thanks to you guys for presenting the budget in this manner that allowed us to go through and, and actually, you know, okay, this line item doesn't look great, are we counting for it here and here? Do we need to change this? We spent a lot of time doing that. I do think that over the next couple of years, there probably will be some hard decisions that we have to make because we have that levy rate cap, and when you have a finite franchise fee that you can use to subsidize your budget, that can only go so far if you continue to increase expenditures. So, you know, I think every department really has to look at their budgets and, and, you know, decide what they need and what, what they can live without, and, because once you run that 5% franchise fee out, and, and that's all the revenue that we can come up with, then you have to start cutting personnel and, you know, really important services, and we don't want to get to that point.
Hi, Margaret Dwyer here. First of all, I want to thank all of the council members and city employees and department heads. This has been really excellent, and in my memory, it's the first time it's ever happened. It's a wonderful thing. I have two questions. One is for Brett Farrell. Brett, you said there were like 300 fire calls and 1,000 medical calls roughly per year. Is there a overriding cause of those fires that you could point to, or are they all different?
So that's about a normal, we average somewhere, you know, 280 to over 300 calls a year. Those are just calls, some of them are called off. If we get paged, then we get called off, or 1022, as we call it. They still go down as a, a call for us, but I think there was around 30 wildland fires, 26 structures. Structures can be identified as different, but, you know, car wrecks, extrication, that, there is a wide variety of number of calls that we go to. Gas leaks is a, is a big one of ours. People smoke gas in their house, we get paged out, we go test, make sure that everything's safe. Carbon oxide. So over all those calls, there's a wide variety of, of different reasons we're getting called out to those.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is for Chief Dave Thomas. I'm wondering if you, if the police department has seen an impact from the new 988 emergency line for mental health, if that has, has impacted you guys positively?
I shouldn't have teased Chief Farrell that he had to come up and I was getting to say it. I knew I jinxed myself. That is an excellent question. It's, when, we started that program, we were one of the Burlington and the Fairfield Police Department were the two initial agencies that participated in that funding to have our officers trained, because the state was offering training. I talked to a couple of people about it, but they offer a week training for basic officers. Our Lieutenant Julie Cancelo, who's our CIT team leader, she's went to two weeks, they wanted her to go to a third week in Texas, and we both had to tell them, no, she's got to actually come back to work, she can't be at training all over the nation, but we have sent so many officers to that. Our goal is from 35 to 50% of our officers to be CIT-trained, so we can respond. Well, it's kind of funny, now I'm getting phone calls and asking from the trainers at the state level, are we upset with them? Because we're not sending officers anymore. And it's, it's my favorite conversation, because I tell them, we're all trained now. We can't send anymore, because we were going to try to get 50%, now we're at 98% of our staff is trained. Guess who's the only one that isn't trained? Me, and I'm so close to retirement, I just, I've had enough mental health training that, but every officer we have is trained, so to say that program at the state and local level was a success, we see the success every day, and we appreciate that state support, because when you can tell a family that not only are our officers now de, and trained in de-escalation, they have a week of mental health, you know, crisis intervention, and instead of the officer trying to figure out, I, you know, don't know what crime I'm investigating, I'm not sure why I'm here, they have a week, long, week worth of training, and they can respond and sit down with that person and calm them down and get them to the emergency room and, and have them talk to the doctor there, or talk to the optometrist. And we can tell family, all our officers are CIT-trained because of this program, it's very beneficial to those folks that have that family member that is great most of the time and then goes into mental health crisis. So we have used a lot of that state money to the point where we are all trained on it now, so thanks for that question.
Okay, my understanding was that if people call 988, the first line of response is not police, is that correct?
I'm sorry, what was your question? I didn't.
If people call the 988 line, my understanding is that the first responder is not a police officer, it's a, a mental health worker. Is that correct? Okay, but, so then you've had a...
Hotlines and 998 is paid for the state, too. We have pamphlets. If anybody in crisis, veterans have a hotline, and, that our homeless advocates in our community in Jefferson County have set up pamphlets, so our dispatch has all kinds of numbers of phone numbers for mental health crisis, definitely.
So definitely, it's been beneficial?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for the question.
Hi, I'm Mindy McAdams. I'm the Executive Director of the Fairfield Area Chamber of Commerce. I would like to thank you for doing this. My mind is blown. I take my leadership class to a lot of these departments, and I want to give them all a shout-out for being gracious and hosting us, and a lot of these guys are humble heroes. I loved hearing them all speak and not... I loved hearing them all speak and not talk about what they do when they're in a sewer break on a holiday in the middle of the night, or when there's a water main break, or when they're sleeping in the maintenance shed because they have to keep our roads clear. I want to thank each and every one of you for all that you do for our city, and I know that Melanie and the City Clerk and Doug work a lot of hours outside of what they're paid, that's part of what we do when we're passionate about what we do, and that shows in our city, and we appreciate each and every one of you.
Thank you for those kind words. I would like to close us out by pointing out the underlying theme, that public service is hard, and most of us in this room have been doing it for decades. The governing body sets the direction and sets the goals and makes the rules. My job is to execute their decisions. The department heads that work for the city are the subject matter experts, and without them, the work can't be done. They're the ones that we depend on day in and day out. Mindy said it best, is they are the ones that are out in the middle of the night, they are the ones that are out on Christmas Day. Nobody thinks about a police officer until you need one. Nobody thinks about a fireman until you need one. Nobody thinks about the Street Department until something is broken and they can't get out of their house and they have to work day in and day out trying to get the snow off the road. Nobody thinks about the Parks Department unless the Rec Center is closed, and nobody thinks about dispatch unless somebody needs to, needs help and they make a phone call and there's no one there. That doesn't happen in Fairfield, Iowa. It means a lot to work here. Thank you, and I hope to get some of your feedback to make this a better presentation. Thank you. I stand for questions. Done is done. Nope. I don't even know what time it is.